Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our meeting of Monday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you for tuning into our virtual city council meeting tonight. Attending the meeting tonight via teleconference are council members Aguirre, Espinoza Garnica, Gee, Ready, and Smith, Vice Mayor Hale, and myself. I'd also like to note that we may be experiencing some technical issues with wave broadcast channel twenty-six. If you're unable to access the meeting through channel twenty-six, you may join via Comcast channel twenty-seven, AT&amp;T channel ninety-nine, through the city's web stream at www redwoodcity.org, or via Zoom through meeting ID nine-nine-four-eight-one-eight-two-five-six-three-nine. Items will be taken in the order they are listed on the agenda. I'd now like to ask our city clerk to call the roll. Ms. Aguilar?
Good evening. We'll start with Councilmember Aguirre.
Here.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Here.
Councilmember Gee.
Here.
Councilmember Ready.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Here.
And Mayor Howard.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. I'd now like to ask Councilmember Gee if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Please join me in saluting the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gee. Now, moving on to item number four, presentations and acknowledgements. We'll start with four A. This evening, we are recognizing a very special group of young athletes who won titles at the Central Coast Section CCS championships earlier this summer. The Sequoia High School Boys Baseball Coach Mike Doyle and Girls Basketball Coach Steve Peaky have joined us to recognize their sensational team players who worked so hard to win this year's championship. I'd now like to turn it over to Coach Mike and Coach Steve for a presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and the rest of the city council. Thank you for taking the time to recognize the achievements of our baseball and girls' basketball teams. You know, Sequoia has a lot of great student athletes. And in addition to the two teams that are talking, that we're talking about tonight, our girl soccer team finished second in CCS and the softball team made it to CCS. As for the baseball team, it was the first CCS championship for Sequoia in twenty-seven years. It was a proud day for every current and former player, coach, or supporter, or and/or supporter of the purple. Our final record was twenty-three and three, and we finished with an eleven-game winning streak. We were the lowest seed in our division, and as a result, had to win three road games on our way to the crown. Probably the most exciting of which was our first win at Cappuccino, which featured a come-from-behind, seven-run rally, and the last inning to win the game. You know, no record like this is accomplished without contributions from the entire team, and that was certainly the case with us, as we had different starting lineups for more than half of our games. We had two players named to the Bay Area Top Forty list, which spans from Marin to the far reaches of the East Bay down to, down to the South Bay. And we had two players on the Top Forty list, Kai Home, who will be playing baseball next year at CSM, and Dylan Getz, who will be back for his senior year at Sequoia this year. Next slide, please. We had an exceptional, any way you looked at it, senior class. These young men have played with and against each other on the Little League fields of Redwood City and San Carlos since they were tiny kids. There are no exceptional teams that don't work exceptionally hard, and that was certainly the case with this, with this team. In addition to working hard, they had a tremendous amount of fun together, and this is a memory they will share the rest of their lives. In addition to excelling on the baseball field, and actually, next slide, please. In addition to excelling on the baseball field, kids in the baseball program over the last two years have gone on to some of the best schools in California and nationwide as represented here. Next slide. The future is bright. Dylan Getz, Cole Kenyon, Nick Sweet, Jack Lanham, and Gavin Murphy, all underclassmen last year, will be back this year, and they all had significant contributions during our CCS run, and they're ready to lead us into two thousand and twenty-two. Next slide. I'd like to also give a shout out to the parents who raised the group of players that we had on the team. They were a pleasure for the coaches to coach, and we very much appreciated the way you cheered us on and supported us every step of the way. You know, sometimes that can be tricky in baseball, and, and the parents, I thought, overall, were exemplary and really showed a great level of, of respect for both our team as well as the teams we were playing throughout the year. And then, lastly, I'd like to recognize Barry Zerby's and Hugh Wilkins, who were my coaching partners on this journey, and Coach Corey Uhalde, whose efforts over the last decade in the Sequoia baseball program really helped pave the way for the success that we had in two thousand and twenty-one. Overall, it was a great year, and we look forward to more to come. With that, it is my pleasure to turn it over to Coach Peaky to talk about our girls' basketball team. Coach Peaky, you're on. You might be on mute.
Coach Peaky, I saw you there. You need to unmute yourself.
Mute.
There we go. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. You were going to be the first one I was going to thank anyway, so I'll thank you twice. Thank you and the other members for, for recognizing our team. It was just such an interesting, incredible season in so many different ways. Obviously, it started out with a lot of uncertainty, and it didn't look as though we'd even have a season, and then it looked like we might have a few games, and then it looked like we would have playoffs. And what was really cool was that this group of young women just were able to step up to every challenge that came their way, not expecting playoffs. We only played a total of nine games the entire season. Normally, you play closer to thirty. But within a two-week period of when we found out that we would have playoffs, the experience and leadership of our seniors sort of carried us to the point where we were absolutely ready for playoffs. And in that one, we, we had about two weeks for that, and it was incredible. We really got focused, and the leadership really showed. We had this group, incredible group of kids, led by our four seniors. All four had been in the program, three of them on the varsity for, for four years, and the fourth on the JVs before the varsity. And they, they got us ready, and it was just the most exciting thing in the world. And by the way, hello out there to the team, if you may be watching. It's, it's great to, I hope you can see me. I can't see you, but, but I miss all of you guys, and feel free to send me a message sometime. In any case, it just worked out great. Couple interesting things about this group of kids. In two thousand and nineteen, two years, two seasons ago, our girls' program won the Central Coast Section for the very first time in the history of Sequoia for any basketball team, girls or boys. And so, that was the very first, two seasons ago, and now this, the same group of kids, for the most part, with, with some others who have moved on to college. They've won it for the second time, the second team in school history to accomplish that feat. So, very impressive, and it was just, it was just the most amazing thing. And I also want to shout out to Melissa Schmidt, who just showed, and Adam Carland, for, Melissa Schmidt for being the athletic director through the most challenging season and, and that could ever happen. And I want to thank Adam Carland for putting the slides together. I sure appreciate that. It was just, it was just the most exciting thing. And I'd also like to shout out to my daughter Christine, who did such a great job of supporting the team, being the assistant coach, singing the National Anthem, and, and bringing us out of breaks during timeouts. The, the way everyone has brought my daughter into the, you know, into the team and, and has accepted her as a part of the big family has been heartwarming, and I know she has appreciated every, every little bit of it. So, the, the kids, it's amazing they were able to get prepared in two weeks for playoffs and then be successful on the road, defeating a team that had played twice as many games. But it's not totally shocking, because these kids are really smart, really experienced, really talented, and, which is evidenced by the team GPA of three-point-eight for our team. So, congratulations to the baseball team, to all the sports teams. Thank you to the parents. Hello to the players, and I hope you're all doing well and thriving. And I'm thrilled that, mainly that I was able to, to function in this Zoom situation, which is not my cup of tea. Thank you again, and I wish all the best to everyone, and hopefully, things will get back to a little closer to normal at some point in the not-too-far future. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Mike and Coach Peaky. Coach Peaky, are you the one in the lovely flowered shirt in that picture?
Yes, that would be me in the lovely flowered shirt. I, yes.
I like it.
I just, oh, thank you. I just purchased it at a local shop in downtown Turlock, where I recently moved. So, trying to make friends and meet people, and, oh, thank you for noticing. Now, I'm going to wear it again. It may be in my rotation of regular shirts.
I think it looks very, I like it. I do.
Oh.
I wouldn't say that if I didn't mean it.
I sure appreciate it.
You, you, both of you must be so very proud, and I know the parents of these players must be extremely proud. They put in as much hard work getting players to and from practices and games as the players themselves practicing, and I know it's a major commitment of time. However, it's so important to have team sports in high school. It's so very important. Thank you for doing this during this really difficult time. I can't thank you enough. You've created some real leaders for us for tomorrow. We appreciate it.
I'm just glad they let me participate in the whole process, you know. It, it was, they did it, and, and Coach and I are just thrilled and grateful to have been part of it, and I wish them all well, and I have no doubt in my mind that the, these kids are going to all be successful in their future endeavors.
Well, thank you for joining us this evening, Coach Mike and Coach Steve. Both of you, thank you for your major commitment of time. Time is a gift you give to people, and the way you get it back in return is probably from the respect and love of your players, so thank you so much for what you do.
Well said.
Thank you again. Thank you. That means a lot.
Thank you again. You're welcome to join us for the rest of the meeting, if you'd like, but I understand if you have to go. We're moving on now to item four B, a proclamation and presentation recognizing National Suicide Prevention Month, and we'll be recognizing this, and it's during the month of September. And I was, I'm so pleased that we have professionals here to accept the proclamation. I am a nurse, and I have a great deal of experience working through and for, with mental illness in many of the patients I took care of in the past, as well as in my family, friends, and through neighbors. It's, it's really heartbreaking when someone is suffering from mental illness and a crisis situation. You really hope that you have people around you who can really handle the situation. So, I, I wanted to just read this before I introduce our speakers. As a city, we depend on our county and community partnerships to help us provide this critical support. We work with the county's Behavioral Health and Recovery Services and its many programs and services, including the South County Adult and Youth Clinics, both located in Redwood City, the Mental Health Outreach Team, and others. We also work with our nonprofit community partners like Mental Health Association, the Sequoia Teen Wellness Center, Mateo Lodge Incorporated, Common R, One Life Counseling, Heart and Soul, and Star Vista. These partners provide crisis intervention and recovery support, counseling for children, youth, and adults, residential care, emergency shelter, permanent supportive housing, and other services. City funding related to mental health has primarily been for shelter operations and permanent supportive housing development. The city refers community members to these partners for mental health support. Our partners refer community members to the city for emergency and financial assistance needs. Tonight, we are presenting Star Vista with a proclamation in support of National Suicide Prevention Month to raise the visibility of the mental health resources and suicide prevention services available in our community. We hope in this way to help de-stigmatize the conversation about mental health and the impact of suicide, and to help connect people with appropriate support services. Star Vista's Crisis Intervention and Suicide Prevention Crisis Line and Center has been a critical partner for Redwood City and San Mateo County for over fifty years. Joining us this evening to receive the proclamation are Sarah Mitchell, Star Vista's CEO, and Eric Viadaris, Star Vista's Director of Family and Community Services. I'd like to read different parts of our proclamation, and then I'll turn it over to Sarah and Eric. Whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death among people aged ten to thirty-four, and the tenth-leading cause of death overall in the United States, whereas the city of Redwood City chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, pack leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. Whereas local organizations like Star Vista have helped people throughout San Mateo County navigate life's challenges by offering counseling, crisis intervention, youth housing, and outreach programs, and reach tens of thousands of people in our community each year. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Diane Howard, Mayor of Redwood City, on behalf of our city council and the people of Redwood City, do hereby proclaim September two thousand and twenty-one as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. I'd now like to turn it over to Sarah and Eric from Star Vista to give a presentation.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'm so inspired and moved that you all in Redwood City want to help de-stigmatize this important issue, and I'm just very moved that you've all invited us to be here for this very important month. So, from the bottom of my heart, and on behalf of everyone at Star Vista, thank you so much for inviting Eric and myself to join you this evening. It's a deep honor for us, and I'm excited to, to have that proclamation up on the wall at our offices. So, thank you so much, Mayor. Again, thank you all for having us. My name is Dr. Sarah Marius Mitchell. I'm the Star Vista CEO, and I use she/her pronouns, and I'm here joined by my colleague, Eric Viadaris, who is one of our esteemed department directors. I'm just so proud to be here with him tonight to go over this presentation. And what I'll be doing is very briefly talking about Star Vista, so that you can hear much more about all the exciting work that's happening with our Crisis Center, and they're doing such innovative and exciting things that I think you'll really enjoy hearing about the work that's happening there. So, if you could, go on to the next slide, please. So, a little bit about Star Vista. This year, we're celebrating our fifty-fifth anniversary. I'm so proud of that. And as you can see here, Star Vista, we help over forty-four thousand people right here in San Mateo County. We do some work in Santa Clara County, but really, the bulk and the heart of our work is right here locally in this community. We work with children, youth, adults, and families, and we help them navigate all the different life's challenges that they might have. We strive to empower individuals, to inspire hope, and to strengthen communities. And we do this through two main ways. We have mental health services. There's a whole range of those that we do right here in our county, and we also have a range of supportive services from case management, youth residential services, and much, much more. The way we envision our work is that we aim to bridge really the equity gap that exists. Everyone has different challenges at times in their life, and what we strive to do is help every single person reach their potential. Next slide, please. So, here, we just have one shot, a picture here of Charlotte Ross, who was the founder. So, she started the Crisis Intervention Suicide Prevention Center back in nineteen sixty-six and actually started, for those of you who may not know, in Burlingame. And we're just so proud to trace back the lineage of our organization to her great vision of being able to provide suicide prevention and crisis intervention support locally. Next slide, please. So, you can see here, again, it started in nineteen sixty-six, and actually, it was one of the very first of its kind in the entire nation. So, we were actually the third Crisis Intervention Suicide Prevention Center that started in California, so Los Angeles, San Francisco, and Burlingame. So, really local, but groundbreaking and innovative thinking. So, you could think of other metropolitan areas that had suicide prevention centers, and we were right there alongside them. We have never lost sight of our mission. The way we were handling calls and the kind of work that we were doing back then has evolved, and it has become much more innovative, of course, to adapt to the times, to meet various community needs. And we're just so very proud of the team and all of the volunteers who do this very important work. With that, I'm going to pass it over to Eric, who can talk to you a little bit more about the various components of our program there.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Good evening, everyone. My name again is Eric Viadaris. I use he/him el pronouns, and I'm just so happy to be here and excited to share with you a little bit more about our Crisis Center. If, next slide, past slide, please. So, our main services right now include our twenty-four-seven Crisis Line, and our phone number is right there, and our Crisis Line provides support to individuals who are really seeking support, whether they're feeling hopeless or need someone to talk to, to connect with. And this is also an important line for loved ones. If you have a loved one who you're concerned about and you want to talk to someone. So, it's not just, as Mayor Diane Howard was saying, that it, it just, doesn't just impact the individual, impacts families, impacts the community. So, this Crisis Line is really there for anyone in the community who is having a challenge that they wanted to get some support. With our Crisis Line is, our wonderful staff and volunteers are on that line twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and they all go through an extensive training to really be able to meet our clients' needs and our callers' needs as to the best of their ability. We also have an emphasis on teen crisis services for youth ages thirteen and up through two different methods of engagement, one of them being our teen chat, that I know back in the day was a lot more popular in terms of getting into a chat room, but to adapt to the times as well, we are now offering a teen texting line. So, teens are welcome to text the number that's here, Monday through Thursday, from four-thirty to nine-thirty PM, and they are actually supported by a peer. So, one of the things that we are really proud of is that we're doing our part to really create peer-to-peer support for our teens, to create a greater feeling of safety and connection around, around very, you know, around various mental health challenges and just a lot of things that are specifically impacting teens. And then, lastly, we have a lot of educational presentations that we do throughout the county. A lot of these are done at our schools, whether it's high school, middle schools, and even some elementary schools, as we're starting to see the impact that, that mental health has on even our, our youngest children. And next slide, please. One of the most exciting things that we have going on right now at our Crisis Center is we're announcing our Youth SOS Services. So, it stands for Youth Stabilization, Opportunity, and Support, and it's our mobile crisis response for youth in San Mateo County ages zero through twenty-five. So, that includes current and former foster youth as well, and really, the intention of this program is to really provide in-person support for those, for youth that are being impacted by an acute crisis. We provide a response that includes a mental health clinician, who is there to really address the acute crisis, provide some de-escalation support, some interventions, and we also have a family partner who is there to really support the individual and then potentially the family with ongoing services and support if they need to get connected to community resource, and really try to reduce the level of risk for the individual and for the family. And the way to access these services are actually just by calling the same Crisis Line number that we had in the first slide, which is the number that you see listed here. And for former foster youth or current foster youth, they can also access this resource by the number that's listed here by calling what the, the Family Urgent Response Hotline, which is listed below. Next slide, please. And just to talk a little bit, at the very end, a little bit about our impact. So, our, we serve eighteen thousand individuals and families annually through the, our twenty-four-seven Crisis Hotline. So, we get a lot of calls, and, and we also support our families through different chats and, as well as community outreach through our educational presentations. And I'm sorry, could, there you go, perfect. And then, because of the pandemics, and one of the things that we noticed with our Crisis Center was just the increased volume of calls, and a lot of the community really being impacted by the pandemic, a rise in anxiety, a rise in depression, wanting to connect, and a lot of the unknowns that we were really facing for the first time. So, as since then, we've just seen a volume, that volume increase, and we just continue to meet our clients where we're at, and I believe that one in four calls were regarding COVID and continue to be something that people are still wanting to get support around. So, that really means for us, as our Crisis Center, as we continue to grow and evolve, as Sarah was mentioning earlier, that we, we are just seeing more calls, and that means we're just doing the best we can to train more volunteers, which thankfully, we've been able to continue to find volunteers in the community who are still really passionate and want to support our community. And that's all I have for us. And again, thank you so much for having us, and thank you so much for the proclamation. We really, really, to us as a program and as an agency.
I want to thank you for your work, for sure. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Eric. I also wanted to mention that Wednesday, September fifteenth, our library is hosting a powerful discussion. It's a forum, and it's called Ask Me Anything: Candid Conversations on Suicide. That would be this Wednesday, September fifteenth, at our library. I encourage anyone who is interested to visit the calendar on the city's website at www redwoodcity.org for more information on how to attend this virtual event. And please, share this information with your networks and your loved ones. And I also want to say thank you to Star Vista. Not only deserve the proclamation, I wanted to thank you and congratulate you on our new partnership of working together. In the future, our police department and Star Vista will be partners in helping the mentally ill during crisis in our community. I'm very, very optimistic and excited about this partnership, so thank you for being with us tonight. Now, moving on to item four C, the presentation by Fire Battalion Chief Chuck Lacks on Zone Haven Evacuation Alert System. Battalion Chief Chuck Lacks will give an overview on Zone Haven. It's an automated evacuation alerting system that bridges the gap between the community and our first responders.
Good evening, Mayor Howard, and Vice Mayor Hale, and members of the city council. I'm Chuck Lacks, Battalion Chief with your Redwood City Fire Department, and this evening I will be giving an update on our Zone Haven evacuation platform. Over the next few slides, I'm going to spend some time talking about wildfires and evacuation to establish a foundation for our discussion this evening. Next slide, please. The wildfire problem has several common factors. Fight, firefighting not effective in the initial attack, multi-agency coordination and command is required. Wildfires have become mass rescue and casualty incidents. Evacuation orders required earlier over larger areas. Traffic congestion coordination is now necessary, and the vulnerable populations are most at risk. Next slide. The wildfire problem has impacted the wildland urban interface areas and has moved into urban neighborhoods, such as the picture we see here of the Coffee Park in Santa Rosa. Next slide. It's hard to point at one thing that got us into this situation. Rather, it's a combination of climate change, human impact, which has created the new normal for us. Next slide. While this new normal has been occurring for the last ten years, the San Mateo County Fire Chiefs in two thousand and eighteen unanimously agreed to move forward with a countywide evacuation plan. Initially, the idea was just a set of zones to be printed in a binder. Quickly, it was determined a real-time solution was possible. Quickly, it was determined a real-time solution was possible. Supervisor Horstley funded the project with seventy-five thousand dollars of Measure K funds to create the zones and build the platform. Zone Haven, the first real-time evacuation management company formed and signed an agreement to implement the idea. Next slide. The goal of evacuations is to get the notice to the community to protect lives, and that information is sent over several channels. But before we get to that, next slide, please. A major emergency is going to trigger the need for the evacuations. Our local law enforcement agencies have the authority to evacuate the community and rely on collaboration firms' successful evacuation. Next slide. Before we can evacuate, we need to determine the area that needs to be evacuated. Before Zone Haven, this would occur using paper maps. Next slide. As you can see, to get to the evacuation, you need to build the layers. Next slide. Pre-Zone Haven, our reflex time to start an evacuation took time. Next slide. To increase our reflex time, Zone Havens and solutions included platform that allow that all agencies could use to coordinate evacuations with stakeholders, a solution that would work beyond San Mateo County, a real-time map-based platform that allowed everyone to see evacuation information, a tool that integrated pre-existing information channels, reduced complication, reduced time to get information to the public faster, was a tool full of local knowledge made available to the public for mutual aid to know where the evacuations are. Next slide. Zone Haven has decreased the reflex time for evacuation notifications through automation. Next slide. How we did it? Well, we built over three hundred zones within San Mateo County, met several times with all fire and law agencies in the county, built a tool that allows for local information to be input, coordinated with our local Office of Emergency Services, with Public Safety Communication Center and CAL FIRE, and created a cross-discipline inter-agency evacuation platform for all stakeholders to utilize. And as you can see in this picture of the collaboration occurring between Redwood City Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, representative from Zone Haven, and from the Fire Department. Next slide. We're going to watch a short, two-minute video together that's going to go into the details of some of the features of the Zone Haven platform. It's narrated by Deputy Fire Chief Jonathan Cox with CAL FIRE. The next slide should start the video.
We're looking here at the first responder application of the evacuation management platform. What this does is it gives first responders a countywide view of all the different zones in San Mateo County. The last five months have been spent conducting hundreds of meetings, hundreds of hours with every fire and law enforcement agency in the, in the county, to really ensure that all of our zones have the same kind of features in the way that they were created, as well as the way that they were numbered. If we look really quick at one of these zones, first responders have the ability to actually look at some really important information, such as the population, the number of structures, parcels, and whatnot. It also gives information such as the fire agency and the law enforcement agency for that area, as well as critical infrastructure, and that could be schools, it could be hospital, it could be boarding care facilities that are vital to ensure that they get some attention during evacuations. When first responders have a fire or an emergency that occurs, and they need to come in here and actually call for evacuation, what we talk about is that kind of one-click method for evacuations. First responders are now able to come in here and actually call for evacuations and automate the entire process, just by doing those two clicks, and you see that this zone is actually now red. What this map shows is, is the area that's under an evacuation order to anybody who has used the map, including nine-one-one centers, our OES partners, all fire and law enforcement officers. After an area has been evacuated, it's also really important to look at the fact that first responders now have the ability to look at current road conditions. So the green, the yellow, the red. If we were to evacuate an area and road conditions were to change, and we'd get some really big kind of choke points, law enforcement officers could actually deploy to those intersections, law enforcement agency for that area, as well as critical infrastructure, and that could be schools, it could be hospital, it could be boarding care facilities that are vital to ensure that they get some attention during evacuations. When first responders have a fire or an emergency that occurs, and they need to come in here and actually call for evacuation, what we talk about is that kind of one-click method for evacuations. First responders are now able to come in here and actually call for evacuations and automate the entire process, just by doing those two clicks, and you see that this zone is actually now red. What this map shows is, is the area that's under an evacuation order to anybody who has used the map, including nine-one-one centers, our OES partners, all fire and law enforcement officers. After an area has been evacuated, it's also really important to look at the fact that first responders now have the ability to look at current road conditions. So the green, the yellow, the red. If we were to evacuate an area and road conditions were to change, and we'd get some really big kind of choke points, law enforcement officers could actually deploy to those intersections, those critical intersections, and get traffic moving or, or perform some traffic flows, maybe opposing possibly, to get traffic out of that evacuated zone. So it gives us a real-time picture about what's going on. This is kind of one of the features of many of this evacuation platform, but it's probably the most important and most critical to highlight, is just the fact that first responders have a platform, that they can actually come together, call for evacuations using common language, and actually get evacuations called for in a format and a way that everybody who needs to know about them can actually see them.
I'm sorry, we definitely experienced a little technical difficulty with the, the video running through that presentation, although you were able to hear the audio on that. So I'll continue from here, which is the next slide. And Zone Haven has really two sides. One side is for the first responders to use to conduct the evacuation, and then we'll get to the other side, which is the side that the community will be allowed to see. And in this slide, what we're seeing in the screenshot is one of our zones here in Redwood City, Zone E zero zero four. And, and for this presentation, we put the zone status to advisory for a test, so we could give you an example of some of the information that's available for first responders. As you can see, it gives the estimated population, the number of vehicles that would be in this zone, the acreage, how many structures are in the zone. Once the zone status is changed, those within the zone will be notified by alerts from SMC Alert Waze, and while that's taking place, county OES will complete the notification through reverse nine-one-one and sending notices to all cell phones within that zone. And then, once that's done, that will be followed up with door-to-door visits with local law enforcement. Next slide. And this is the community side. It really looks very similar to the first responder side, although the status of the information looks a little bit different. It still shows the status of the zone in advisory for a test, that gives a summary and a description. But here's where some of that real helpful information will be for the community. If this was an evacuation, under the evacuation info, we'd be able to give such things as a temporary evacuation point for people to evacuate to. Next slide. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Battalion Chief Lacks. I really appreciate the presentation. I know I received questions from people, what is Zone Haven, and, and how are we being protected, how are we being notified? I just felt this was really important to share with the community, but thank you so much for making that presentation. If anyone has questions, do you have a number or a website where they could ask additional questions or find out more information?
They could reach out directly to the Fire Department at our administrative office phone number, which could be found on our city website to Fire Department, and our numbers are listed there.
Okay, thank you very much. And I would imagine they could go to the city's website and look under Fire Department, and I know there's an area where you can submit a question.
Yes.
Thank you so much for coming this evening, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item five, public comment on the consent calendar on matters of council interest and on items not on the agenda. Procedures for making public comment, you see on the screen before you. I will now turn it over to our city clerk to facilitate public comment on consent items, on matters of council interest, and on matters not on the agenda. Ms. Aguilar?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. We ask members of the public who wish to speak tonight to please follow the instructions on the screen to be recognized for public comment. If you want to speak on items on the consent calendar, on matters of council interest, or anything that is not on the agenda tonight, please raise your hand at this time and keep your hand raised until you are recognized. And if you are joining us by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and we'll give it about a minute. Keep your hand raised so that we could see how many speakers we have for this portion We're taking public comment at this time. Mayor Howard, we have two raised hands at this time. Anybody else? I'll give it another couple of seconds. Okay, so we have two speakers. Each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. The timer will start when you begin speaking. I will just say the names of the two speakers. The first will be Jody Paley, and Jody Paley will be followed by Adrian Brant, and those are our two speakers for this portion of public comment this evening. Go ahead, Jody.
Good evening, thanks, Madam Aguilar. Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and members of council and the community, it is time again to speak about Chase the Chill. This is going to be the sixth year that the community will be doing this. What that is, is we collect handmade items. We are looking for hats, scarves, socks, gloves, and last year, we added in masks. We asked that if you donate masks, to please package each one individually in its own plastic sandwich bag. Over the last five years, we've probably collected somewhere in the range of twenty-five-hundred items. Each item is collected in barrels in the month of October, and I'll be back to let people know where it is. And then in November, we have a tagging and sorting event at the cab, as well as then the hanging shows up some morning. So if people need any information, they can go to Facebook to chase the chill RWC, and also, if you need anything, I have had lots of yarn donated over the years, and we do have some both various knitting and crochet needles, but things do not need to be knit or crochet. We've had a lot of people and a lot of scout groups and school groups who have just bought the cut-and-sew fleece at Joann's and Michael's. If you hit something with a pair of scissors, it is now handmade, and people will cut them into strips and then put some fringe into it. So let's keep this going. Last year, because of the stay-at-home order, we had a record year of the amount of items, but everything's always gone within the first probably half a day. So thank you, and I'll be back to let you know where, where the bins are going to be.
Thank you, thank you, Jody, very much. Our next speaker and last speaker for this portion is Adrian Brant.
Good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Javel Hale, and council members and members of the public. My name is Adrian Brant, and I am a member of the Caltrain Citizens Advisory Committee for identification purposes, speaking on behalf of myself. I noticed this week, we had a planning commission meeting on the transit district notice of preparation and scoping, and that brought to mind my hopes for, number one, a critical midline station overhaul for Redwood City, for a four-track station that will permit us really to be the central hub of the Caltrain system, allowing Dunbar and rail to come in and so forth. The other piece of that is that I'm hopeful that we can basically fix the least, in my mind, pleasant way to cross the tracks today, which is the Jefferson Undercrossing, and restore that to be an at-grade crossing. There's an opportunity, if we go with an elevated grade separation through the city, to once again restore those missing crosswalks and make that a very pleasant pedestrian-scaled way to cross the tracks. Today, that's probably the least, the least preferable way for bikes and pedestrians to cross. The other point this raises is that the citywide grade separation study, these projects take a very long time. I've been an observer for thirty years. It's not uncommon for these processes to take ten or more years before they're funded. And so what, what I want to call to your attention is the need, I feel, for a train horn quiet zone to further improve the ambiance of downtown Redwood City. Currently, Caltrain is planning and has already increased the trains to more than it ever has before. Federal rules require lots of horn blowing, four times at up to one hundred and ten decibels for each train. The train horn quiet zone is completely safe, and it makes train blowing optional, and I want to encourage us to have developers as community offsets to help us fund those things in an interim basis before grade separations can occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brant, very much. That concludes public comment for this portion. If you are not able to make live public comment and would like to send comments to the city council, you may do so by emailing council@redwoodcity.org. And I'll turn the meeting back over to Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. We'll now move on to item six, which is the consent calendar, and these are items usually taken together for one vote. And so now I'd like to ask our council if they would like to, if anyone has a question or if someone would like to make a motion and a second to approve all the items on the consent calendar.
May I move to approve all the items on the consent calendar?
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Guiree and seconded by Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. And I'd like to ask our city clerk to call the roll call, please.
Thank you. We'll start with Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'd now like to read all the items that we just approved. Public access easement and various agreements for the affordable housing development at thirteen oh four El Camino Real by GS HIP one-three-zero-four ECR comma LP. The sanitary sewer connection and service at four-seventy-five Upland Road in unincorporated San Mateo County. Sanitary sewer connection and service at four-seventy-seven Upland Road in unincorporated San Mateo County. Amendment number ten to the sanitary sewage treatment capacity rights and services for the Town of Woodside Agreement. Residential purchase agreement for the acquisition of a below-market rate home located at twelve-thirty-one Warren Street, Unit one-zero-five. Tentative agreement between the City of Redwood City and the Redwood City Police Supervisors Association, or the PC, excuse me, the PSA. Waive second reading and adopt zoning ordinance amendments, Articles thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-six, thirty-seven, forty-five, and forty-eight, to amend the accessory dwelling unit requirements. Approve minutes of August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, and August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one city council meetings, and approve claims and checks from September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one through September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, and the usual and necessary payments through September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Moving on to item number seven, which is public hearings. Seven A, amendments to the Affordable Housing Ordinance to provide a preference for those who live or work in Redwood City, ensure the concurrent delivery of affordable units and new development, and improve clarity and effectiveness. I'd like to ask our housing leadership manager, Allyn Lancaster, to start giving the presentation. Ms. Lancaster?
Good evening, Mayor Howard and city council members. Tonight's presentation will be discussing Good evening, Mayor Howard and city council members. Tonight's presentation will be discussing proposed amendments to the city's Affordable Housing Ordinance. We had planned to bring to the city council updates to the Affordable Housing Impact Fee as well. However, we decided to delay this item and bring it to the city council in coordination with a proposed update to the park's impact fees, which will be coming before the city council at a later date. And this is to allow the city council to have a comprehensive review of all city impact fee changes. So tonight, again, we'll just be reviewing the amendments to the Affordable Housing Ordinance. Next slide. The presentation for tonight will consist of questions for city council, a review of the current Affordable Housing Ordinance, the proposed amendments, the actions taken to date, and staff's recommendations. Next slide, thank you. So the questions for city council's consideration are: Does the city council support the Planning Commission's recommendation, which includes adopting a local live-work preference, adopting assurances for the concurrent delivery of affordable units and new development, and adopting miscellaneous clarifications to improve clarity and effectiveness of the Affordable Housing Ordinance? Thank you. In 2018, the Affordable Housing Ordinance was adopted and consolidated all of the city's affordable housing requirements within one section of the city's zoning code. The ordinance discusses the requirements for both residential and non-residential development. Large residential developments with 20 units or more are required to provide 15% to 20% affordable units on-site. This is also known as an inclusionary housing requirement. Smaller residential developments with 5 to 19 units and non-residential developments are required to pay an Affordable Housing Impact Fee. Residential developments with four or fewer units are exempt from the ordinance. Next slide. The ordinance also allows for alternative means of compliance to our standard requirements. Developers can opt to provide land donations for affordable housing, convert existing market-rate units to affordable units, or provide onsite or offsite affordable units. Recently, the city has had several non-residential developers choose an alternative means of compliance by opting to provide both onsite and offsite affordable units rather than paying the impact fee. Next slide. Since the adoption of the ordinance in 2018, staff has identified several components that require updating to improve both effectiveness and clarity. There are three primary categories for the proposed amendments, and I'll go into them in more detail on the subsequent slides. First, staff is proposing establishing a preference for people who live, have formerly lived, and/or work in Redwood City to get access to affordable units as a way to mitigate residential displacement. Secondly, we're proposing amendments to assure that the affordable units are delivered concurrently with new development. And third, miscellaneous clarifications, which include clarifying how fees are calculated for new development on properties with demolished structures or abandoned uses, as well as providing more specificity as to what developers are required to provide within their affordable housing plan. Next slide. We recognize that displacement is occurring in Redwood City due to jobs, housing imbalance, rapidly increasing housing prices and rents, and a lack of affordable housing supply. And so in the housing division, we are actually currently working on an anti-displacement strategy, which will be presented to the city council later this year. As part of this effort to mitigate displacement, staff is proposing the adoption of a local live-work preference. The live-work preference would allow for eligible households to receive a preference when affordable units become available. The preference would apply to households that are displaced by city activities, such as displacement caused by a public works project, and to households that currently live in Redwood City, households that formerly lived in Redwood City. So in other words, households who have likely already experienced displacement, and households that work or have been offered work in the city. Households receiving, oh, can you go back, please? Households receiving the preference would still need to meet all the other eligibility requirements for the affordable units, such as income eligibility and occupancy requirement. The policy would be required for both for sale affordable units and rental units that are created under the ordinance. Lastly, a local live-work preference is a common policy tool that is used by many jurisdictions, including our neighbors in San Mateo, Pacifica, and San Carlos. Next slide. The city commissioned a live-work policy analysis to explore the extent of displacement pressures and the potential impact of a live-work preference. The policy analysis supported the need for the live-work preference and had several conclusions. First, it confirmed that residential displacement has been occurring in the city and in the broader county, and that lower-income households, including households that are very low-income and extremely low-income, are affected at an outsized rate. Analysis also determined that a preference would, one, would help reduce the impacts of the jobs, housing imbalance, as well as help mitigate displacement pressures by giving greater affordable housing access to lower-income residents, workers, and residents who've already experienced displacement. Lastly, the preference could provide longer-term environmental benefits, as it would reduce vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions by allowing for more people who work in Redwood City to live in Redwood City. Next slide, thank you. The second type of amendment we are proposing is establishing a baseline standard requiring the concurrent delivery of affordable units in all new development. Under the existing ordinance, we have requirements to ensure that affordable units are delivered at the same time or concurrently as market-rate residential units. However, we don't have a similar requirement for non-residential development. In other words, there is no assurance for getting affordable units built concurrently with non-residential development. As I mentioned earlier, the city has had several non-residential developers opt to provide affordable units rather than paying the impact fee. For this reason, we are proposing the adoption of an amendment that requires concurrent delivery of affordable units in all new development, including non-residential developers who opt to build units rather than paying the fee. In practice, a requirement for concurrent development means that the city does not have to give temporary certificate of occupancy to new development until the affordable units receive their temporary certificate of occupancy. This concurrent delivery requirement assures that the immediate affordable housing impacts of new development are mitigated at the time of construction completion. So in other words, there isn't a lag between the demand for new affordable units and when new affordable units are being supplied. Next slide, thank you. With that said, we do recognize that there's not a one-size-fits-all requirement, and that development projects come in many forms with different phasing and financing constraints. We also want to continue encouraging our non-residential developers to build affordable units. So we are proposing two other alternatives in lieu of the standard concurrent delivery requirement to provide greater flexibility for developers while still providing the city with assurances that the affordable units will be built. The alternatives would allow developers to complete their non-residential or market-rate developments prior to completing the affordable units, as long as they can provide these alternative assurances. So the first option, alternative one, there's no connection between the building permits or certificates of occupancy between the non-residential or market-rate development and the affordable unit. In other words, developers could receive building permits or certificates of occupancy for non-residential market-rate units, even if the affordable units have not started and/or completed construction. However, the developer would be required to provide a completion guarantee and a deposit or letter of credit in the amount of what would have been impact fee for the project. The deposit or letter of credit provides the city with the required impact fee should the affordable units not start construction at all. The completion guarantee allows the city to enforce construction completion by the guarantor should the construction of the affordable units halt. Having a completion guarantee and a deposit or letter of credit gives the city comprehensive assurances to address a variety of potential issues. This alternative would work best for projects that have incompatible project timelines between the new development and the affordable unit. Alternative two, it differs from alternative one in that the building permits of the affordable housing units are tied to the building permits of the new development. However, the certificates of occupancy are not connected. In exchange, a developer would only be required to provide a completion guarantee, deposit, or letter of credit. This alternative ensures building permits are pulled for affordable units, which is a really crucial step, and gives the city additional assurances should construction halt. This alternative would likely work best for projects that can start construction at the same time, but for whatever reason, the affordable units will take longer to construct. For both of these alternatives, the city can exercise the deposit, letter, credit, or completion guarantee five years after the building permit is pulled. And the ordinance amendments also include the city's flexibility to grant extensions, you know, should projects show that they're making progress. Once the affordable units are built, the deposit or letter of credit would be returned, and the completion guarantee canceled. The city has used these alternatives with previous non-residential projects before. Standardizing this requirement would really streamline our existing negotiation processes, which have been really time-intensive for both city staff and the developers. Next slide. Lastly, we are including some miscellaneous clarifications to more clearly reflect how the city currently calculates the Affordable Housing Impact Fee. Language has been added to the ordinance to define demolished and abandoned uses, which helps us set guidelines on when a demolish or abandoned use could qualify for an impact fee credit, since our fees are based on net new square footage. For demolished properties, the amendment clarifies that demolished properties can receive impact fee credit if the planning application is submitted within two years of demolition. For abandoned properties, the amendments clarify that abandoned properties can receive credit if the planning application is submitted within two years of the last permitted use of the site. Providing these concrete definitions provides clarity to applicants on what can and cannot be counted towards their impact fee calculations. This helps streamline the process, and developers know more clearly upfront what their impact fee obligations are going to be. Additionally, staff is also recommending amendments to better reflect the city's standard requirements for the Affordable Housing Plan and Agreement. Again, this is to really increase transparency upfront on what our requirements are. So reviewing the actions we've taken to date. On April 26, the city council initiated the ordinance amendment proceedings, and I'll actually be discussing this in more depth on the next slide. In May, we held two information sessions with for-profit and nonprofit developers and held a public comment period from June 15 through July 15. The comments received were taken into consideration when developing these amendments. On August 17, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the ordinance amendments. And today, we are introducing the ordinance amendments, which are tentatively scheduled for a second reading on September 27. And if approved, they would go into effect 30 days after the second reading or on October 28. As I mentioned earlier, the proposed Affordable Housing Impact Fees will be presented at a later date. So on April 26, the city council initiated proceedings to consider updates to the Affordable Housing Ordinance. And this gives the city council authority to apply the amendments retroactively. More specifically, this means that the city council has the option to apply these amendments to any development project with a new map that's had its planning application deemed complete between April 26 and when the amendments are in effect, which is, again, tentatively October 28. Additionally, the city can choose to retroactively apply the amendments to projects that are only regulated under local laws, so no subdivision map. And similarly, those amendments could apply to projects with planning applications deemed complete between April 26 and the ordinance effective date. The ordinance as drafted recommends that the amendments will not apply to applications deemed complete prior to April 26. However, applications deemed complete after April 26 may be subject to the amendment. The city has deemed three residential projects as complete since the April 26 initiation to proceed. However, the proposed amendments wouldn't have any impact on those projects as they are just paying the impact fee. With that said, the city does have several non-residential and large residential projects in the pipeline that would be impacted by these amendments that might have their planning applications deemed complete before the proposed amendment effective date, again, October 28. So this would be up to the city council to determine if they want to apply the amendments retroactively. Historically, the city council has never, never retroactively applied updates to projects, but because of the initiation to proceed, this does give the city council the flexibility to do so. Slide 14, or sorry, next slide. And so the recommended action is that the city council waive the first reading and introduce the amendments to the Affordable Housing Ordinance, which again include a live-work preference, assurances for concurrent delivery of affordable units, and several miscellaneous clarification. And then lastly, again, are the questions for city council. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Lancaster. Before we open it for public comment, does the council have any clarifying questions? Councilmember Ready?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. And may I say that this is brilliant work. Thank you so much to staff, to Ms. Lancaster, and whoever else was responsible for this wonderful work. Could I ask you to go back to the alternatives and to ask you if you're asking us to do something tonight about these alternatives? Because I wasn't completely clear about what staff was recommending with regard to these two alternatives.
Yeah, so both of these alternatives are included in the ordinance amendment, and these are not necessarily alternatives for the city council, but these are two alternative options that developers could choose to pursue.
Okay.
And I apologize if that was not clear.
Yeah, that's all the explanation I needed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ready. I had a similar question. Thank you. Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. And Elin, thank you, and everyone that's worked on this for the last several months. It's great that this slide is up. I was curious if you could explain to me who who provides the completion guarantee or deposit or letter of credit? And I will go to some of the projects that are in the pipeline where maybe a non-residential developer is partnered with a nonprofit, and the nonprofit is the one that is doing the affordable housing, and title is being transferred or whatever. Who determines who is required to do the guarantee or the completion guarantee or letter of credit?
We would require the non-residential developer to provide the deposit, letter of credit, or completion guarantee. Since the obligation is on them to satisfy the Affordable Housing Ordinance, they would be the responsible party for providing that. And with the completion guarantee, we would typically look at their parent organization to make sure that they have sufficient finances to actually can do, you know, follow through on that completion guarantee.
And then going back to your earlier slide, having been on council previously where we provided the alternatives, one of the reasons we council decided to encourage the developer builder to complete the units is that they could do it faster than the city. So under one of the alternatives, they could give land, you know. As you know, the three pillars of affordable housing are land, money, and political will. In the event that a developer says, I'm just going to give the city the land, are they relieved?
Yes, these alternatives really are applicable to developers that are proposing to build affordable units.
No, no, I understand that, but we wanted affordable units built as quickly as possible. That's why we were encouraging developers to build the units, because the city institutions are not very fast. I'll just leave it at that. You know, collecting checks or just putting on RFP and then soliciting development applications takes time. And government isn't necessarily the most quickest and nimble in this. And so what prevents someone from just saying, giving land and saying, here's my contribution instead, and I don't have to do the guarantee or the deposit or letter of credit?
I mean, I think that would be for the city council's consideration, if that they want to accept a land donation as the alternative means of compliance. This is really for those projects that have already presented that they are going to be. be providing the units. And if they can't meet the concurrent delivery requirement, these are the alternatives to that.
I'm not sure I was clear in my question, but thank you. And then to our city attorney, I missed the part in the staff report, Ellen, about making this potentially retroactive to projects that are already in the pipeline or been approved. What vulnerability does the city have for changing or going retroactive on requirements to projects that have been already accepted into the pipeline?
Thank you, Councilmember G. As to the question regarding the retroactive, retroactiveness, we have complied with state law on providing the notice and having the City Council initiate these amendments so that all developers and the public are on notice that the city was considering making these Affordable Housing Ordinance amendments. So there is no vulnerability. Really, it's a policy decision for, for the City Council to make, whether you want it to be applicable as early as April 26 or as late as the effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Those are great questions, and I was going to say that maybe we could put something in, in our final vote about land donation. So I think that's something that needs to be included.
Councilmember May, Mayor?
Yes.
Just clarify, Councilmember G was speaking to a portion of the ordinance that already provides the developer an opportunity to propose an alternative, you know, donation of land in lieu of their impact fee payment. And that alternative's already built into the existing ordinance. It is written in a way that the city has the discretion to consider this alternative mitigation program. A developer would have to offer it, and the city would have to decide whether it's something that's acceptable as an alternative means.
I see. So, so it has been addressed, and the city would have the final determination on that particular donation?
That's correct. Councilmember G, I understood your question as being one of, I think, more strategy. What is to prevent a developer from deciding just to simply provide the land donation rather than delivering the affordable units? And that is one of the considerations that staff was taking in providing these flexibilities and in these alternatives, one and two, for a developer that is offering to construct the units. The city did not want to be so punitive that it would no longer be a, an option that was of interest to a developer. So that's, that's why the flexibility was built into these alternatives in the hopes of helping a developer make that decision easier.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ramirez. Councilmember Smith, do you have one clarifying question?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. So Ms. Lancaster, I understand that the city is using for the, excuse me, local preference for residents and workers in Redwood City, stipulation that if households or individuals have ever lived in the city, they would be eligible, which, you know, helps to really diffuse this issue of disparate impact, which I think is great. I mean, that's right-headed for us to be thinking about that preemptively. But I guess my question is, how will the city establish what past residency looks like? And I'm wondering about that specifically in reference to unhoused folks in our community and also young folks as well who may not have an established track record of leasing or, or bills or anything like that. I'm just wondering if, if you could talk to that?
Yeah, for any unhoused or formerly homeless residents, generally speaking, they have gone through our countywide coordinated entry system. And so we do have a way of kind of monitoring where they have been. And typically in that system, it's, you're, you're considered from an area based on the last place you've slept. And so we would typically look for something like that to determine that, yes, this, this formerly homeless person or unhoused person has had some connection to Redwood City, and that would be, I think, the simplest way. In terms of young folks who may not have a clear lease or utility bill, I think that will be a little more complicated. They would need to show some other kind of alternative way, perhaps showing that they were enrolled in school here and that they, their address shows it being that they lived in Redwood City. You know, I think this is the details that we will need to sort out in further, but I think that's great to highlight the potential issues upfront.
Thanks, Laura. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Those are great questions. I'd now like to turn it over to our city clerk to facilitate public comment. Ms. Aguilar?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now is the time for public comment on item 7A, that is, the amendments to the Affordable Housing Ordinance that were just presented by staff. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand now and keep your hand raised so that we could see how many speakers we have for this item. If you're joining us by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Give it a few more seconds. Okay, we have one raised hand, so one speaker. You will have two minutes to make your public comment. The timer will begin once you start speaking. And our speaker this evening is Kevin, Ken Chan. Go ahead, Mr. Chan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Hello, members of the Redwood City, City Council. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm an organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with our communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes throughout San Mateo County. On behalf of the HLC, I first like to say that we're very much excited about the inclusion of community members who have previously lived in Redwood City in this proposed live-work preference. So many of our residents have been displaced in just these past several years and would absolutely jump at the chance to return to the place that they call home. However, it's our belief that the policy should go a step further. We request that include our neighbors who live in North Fair Oaks and the other nearby low-income communities. The equity issues that we all collectively experience are regional, and this is a small thing that the city can do to ensure that more community members, as many as, sorry, as many community members as possible can take advantage of the opportunities that Redwood City has to offer. Most people, even longtime residents, are fairly unaware of the boundaries that exist between our cities. It's arbitrary that folks, to say that folks that live in the same area aren't a part of the community because they didn't rent within an incorporated city. So we ask that you please be generous with these guidelines and be as inclusive as possible. Thank you so much for your work and for this opportunity to comment tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chan, very much. Mr. Chan was our last speaker on this item, and I will turn the meeting back over to Mayor Howard.
Thank you, and I will now close the public hearing and open it up to council discussion. Now, who would like to begin? Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Yeah, I just want to say how strongly in favor of this, I am of this ordinance. Beginning of my term, I've been talking about the displacement, and this is exactly the type of stuff that we need to do. I'm very grateful that we have considered the options for local prioritizing, and I know that this would be exactly what was said before by others, an opportunity for people to return to Redwood City if they really wish to. I know many people really wish to. So many people have been pushed out and don't have the opportunity to also live where they work. So I'm so grateful for this opportunity. I really hope that the rest of the council feels the same. So I'm just going to leave it at that, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ready?
Thank you very much, Mayor Howard. I really like the suggestion, the HLC suggestion, that we include North Fair Oaks. I think that, I know that staff is looking at maybe the future, looking at neighborhood, neighboring cities in the county and looking at this regionally, but for the moment, I would like us to consider including North Fair Oaks. I think that it's very true that we, we serve North Fair Oaks residents through Fair Oaks Community Center and through many of our initiatives, and they feel like Redwood City residents, and we should treat them like Redwood City residents. So I would, I do embrace that one suggestion and ask that we consider adding it to our recommendation. Otherwise, I'm completely in support of everything else that's been recommended.
Ms. Ramirez, you have your hand raised?
I do, thank you. Councilmember Ready, thank you for your comment. I did want to mention that the live-work study that concluded the analysis that we're relying on in moving this forward only studied the city and the city's residency and populations as well as needs. So I would recommend, I think it can be something in the motion if there is an interest by the council for us to continue studying and maybe bring, either delay the entire ordinance until we can do that or bring some, a small amendment at a later time, once that study has been completed. But I did want to mention that at this point, the staff has not studied that aspect, including any implications of that.
Thank you very much for that clarification, and I would definitely not want to delay action tonight and would support considering it at a later date. And I would appreciate our putting it maybe on the backburner so that we don't forget about it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hale?
Right there now.
Thank you. Sorry. Little commentary there. Well, I just want to say how grateful I am to staff. There are times doing this work where you think you've found an impenetrable problem, like how, how we allow, how we make it possible to invite our neighbors back who were pushed out due to affordability. And this is just such an incredible solution. And really, the thanks goes to our staff who did all of the legwork of hearing a problem that council and the community continually expressed and then finding a solution. I personally love the idea of including our neighbors in North Fair Oaks, many of whom already feel like a part of Redwood City. And I think that there is an element there of adjusting for previous inequities, the community they already feel a part of, but they couldn't afford to live in. That is, is so spot on. So thank you so much to staff. I hope that other cities and municipalities are watching. This is a really bold policy, and I'm going to be very excited to cast my vote for it.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I will start kind of backwards and kind of leave my comments on the local preference to the end. Just wanted to get, or maybe just give a quick thought about the affordable housing delivery. I know that there was a part of the staff report that suggests that there can be exceptions made for certain residential developers with regard to their promissory notes or their guarantees that they're bringing forward. And it said that the city would make decisions about in which situations would be appropriate. My only comment there is I would really love to just get clarity on what that process will look like so that there's some transparency into which applicants are getting extensions or getting exceptions and which ones are not. Again, I just think for the sake of fairness and, and transparency, we should provide some definition around that, how that's going to happen. In terms of the preference for local legacy residents, I think that overall, we're moving in the right direction. This is really a promising new policy that the city is putting forward. I would just like to kind of caution Ms. Lancaster and Ms. Stevenson Diaz about the fine line we're walking from an equity perspective. What I don't think we want to do is to create tiers of privilege among our marginalized communities. I was speaking with Ms. Diaz earlier today, and, you know, we talked a little bit about the current status of the African-American community, actually, in Redwood City, which is trending at about 3% of the population. And so I wouldn't want a policy like this to keep out low-income African-Americans as well, who are not represented well in the city. At some point, they were, and so there is the ability that we could potentially draw some of those displaced folks back. But I think that that's a very difficult process. I think it requires a more long-term, comprehensive communication strategy of this policy, which I'm not sure the city is prepared to do. So I would just say, you know, let's keep an eye out for that. Again, like, this is a very well-intentioned policy that could potentially have impact that we're not fully appreciating today. And so I would love for us to revisit this policy once it fully is fleshed out and once it is fully implemented, just to see if any of those unintended consequences are actualizing themselves. But other than that, I think we're headed in the right direction, and I appreciate all the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Giorei?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo my colleagues' sentiments. I'm very grateful that we are leading in this really proactive way of working with our residents, especially those that have been displaced and those that are in, on the verge of being displaced. And I want to thank staff for all the work that's, that's happening. And as we know, and I also agree with my colleagues, many of the folks that have been displaced are in the North Fair Oaks community area that are connected to the city in many ways. So I look forward to adding that piece to this great opportunity. My question is, have other cities moved in with ordinance such as this, and what were some of the obstacles that they face? Any of the cities, maybe within the county, maybe without, out of the county, that we might know of? And I was going to ask that for staff, if we have any data on that, so that we can be proactive as we move forward with something like this. Maybe Ms. Lancaster might have that?
Ms. Lancaster, would you have that information? Can you answer that question?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that question. We do, we are tracking which cities kind of in the broader Bay Area have similar live-work preferences. And to my knowledge, I don't know if any of them have had any issues such as, you know, fair housing claims or any of that. Some of the cities have had preferences in place for many, many years. Others have more recently adopted them. But to my knowledge, I am not aware of any cities having specific issues, but that is something that we can look into further.
Yeah, especially in light of what my council colleague, Smith, just mentioned, you know, what are some of the unintended consequences that, you know, out of a policy such as this, which is great, but sometimes it comes with other areas that we might not be aware of.
And one thing I failed to mention in my presentation, and I appreciate Councilmember Smith bringing it up, is we do plan to track the impacts of this ordinance, and we will see, you know, what its effect has been. And, and of course, if we find that, you know, it does have unintended consequences or impacts that we didn't anticipate, you know, we definitely will bring it back before the City Council to make any revisions that are necessary. So we do plan to track its impact.
I know you had a lot of data in the report. Do we have a percentage or a number of folks that we know have been displaced that we are targeting?
I don't. I know there's a lot of data in our study. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
That's okay. That's all right. Thank you, Ms. Lancaster. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lancaster. I appreciate that. And if you could possibly follow up with an email to council, I'd be very interested in knowing what other cities have put this in place and have any changes been made, just for informational purposes, because I didn't see that, and I'd love to know that information. Thank you. I think we all would benefit from that information. Thank you. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
I do have a question on the
I do have a question and a comment, but I want to let Councilmember G go ahead because they haven't had a chance yet to give their comment or questions.
Thank you. Councilmember G?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Thank you, Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. I guess this is very cutting edge, and so I would ask that we be kind of mindful of unintended consequences. So going the other way, though, what would success look like? How do we measure that this policy, if the council were to approve it, would be successful?
Ms. Lancaster, I'm guessing that's for you.
Yeah, I think success would be that all or if not most of the affordable units that are created through our ordinance are serving, you know, people who live here, who work here, or have formerly lived here. And that, you know, the affordable units that we are creating are serving our community. And so we will be tracking, as developers build the units and hold the lotteries, you know, we will be requesting that information of applicants to better understand who is applying and then ultimately who is being selected for those units.
Thank you. And thank you. It looks like her city manager wanted to offer her thoughts about success.
Well, actually, I wondered if I could pile on for Lynn and ask her if we have a sense, if you could give a sense to the council and community for recent affordable housing units that have leased out, what proportion we think have gone to residents? And we have understood there to be a challenge here. I'm not sure we've actually articulated that many units currently go to folks who do not particularly have a connection to Redwood City.
Yeah, and don't quote me on numbers because this is just from my memory. But for the last two affordable housing projects that have recently gone through their application lotteries, I would say in the 10% to 15% were actually Redwood City residents were placed in those units. I don't have data on employment because that hasn't been tracked, whether other applicants were employed in Redwood City, but roughly, you know, 10, around 10%. And I'm happy to provide more detailed numbers in that email to city council as well.
Great, thank you. No, I believe it's very cutting edge. We've seen, for example, the Community College District with their faculty-staff housing projects give a faculty-staff preference to district employees. We are seeing projects targeting veterans that give a veterans preference. So this is very bold and would put the city on the front lines of providing this live-work preference. Also, in defending any live-work preference complaints, I guess, or litigation. You know, I'm supportive of this. We need to do something different to make sure that our residents and those that were displaced have the opportunity. But I'd offer to council, there's another piece that goes with this that is separate from the ordinance, and it was referenced in the staff report, that the funding for affordable housing is very competitive these days, difficult to obtain. And so I would ask that the council, through its governance committee, adopt part of its governance platform advocacy for streamlining, getting more low-interest tax credits available, and to equalize the competition for low-interest tax credits, SIDLAC funding, and things like that, so that it's very clear that not only do we want this to happen, not only do we want affordable housing to be created, that we're advocates for making more money available or land available and streamlining the process. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you, and I'm sure Ms. Diaz will put that on the governance committee agenda for discussion. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Yes, I would like quickly just wanted to share support and also looking at a future date, the ways to amend it to allow NFO residents. And I was curious to know if there was such a policy ordinance, like an ordinance already that could apply to not just live-work for adults, but like those who like go to school in our school districts? Because I know a lot of, you know, I was in North Fair Oaks, and I was part of the Redwood City School District. So I just was curious if there was any ordinance that would, or if there's any like conflict there, if that could be a conflict potentially in policy. But yeah, I just was curious about that, to see if that was a possible way to look at it. But, you know, we can look at it, we can look at a future date. That was just a thought that I had.
Well, it's a good question. Could I ask Ms. Lancaster, is that something that's currently being considered, or is that something that could be studied at a later time?
Similar to the North Fair Oaks, we did not study the population of our school district in the live-work policy analysis, so that would require additional review if the city council was interested in that.
Thank you.
I'm guessing, though, that if you live, if you're going to a Redwood City school district, for the most part, don't you live in either unincorporated or incorporated Redwood City?
If you go to a school and...
No, no, I was addressing this to Ms. Lancaster. Is this something that you feel is an issue? Or I shouldn't have assumed, but I'm assuming that most who go to the Redwood City School District either live in unincorporated or incorporated Redwood City. So maybe this isn't something that's as higher priority as maybe studying North Fair Oaks. And if we did study North Fair Oaks, would that capture the student population?
I think generally, yes, just studying North Fair Oaks would capture the student population. I do know our Belmont-Redwood Shores School District also serves Redwood City residents as well as students, I believe, in San Carlos and Belmont. So that is where I think additional clarification and review would be needed.
Well, that's a good thought because it depends on if we wanted to extend to our neighboring cities. And if not, then we would probably isolate the study to be Redwood Shores. So that's a good point. Thank you. I saw Vice Mayor Hale's hand raised. There she is.
Yes, I did want to simply comment on the school's suggestion is that I don't think that we should include that without discussing that with our colleagues on the various school boards that serve Redwood City because there's so many implications that that could have on the school districts as well. And I know for the Redwood City, the RCSD School District has recently changed funding formulas, so you're not able to transfer in from outside of the district. Previously, you were. But I don't know the status of that, given the complexity of the state's funding formulas for all of the other districts, so that, I think that would take more effort. And I agree with the mayor. I see that as a lower priority.
Thank you for the input. So everyone has had their chance to ask or make a suggestion. I just had some comments. We received a letter from the Housing Leadership Council as well as Mid Peninsula for Fair Housing, Mid Penn Housing, excuse me, that's a different organization. And they both had suggestions. As far as the Housing Leadership Council, I would like to ask if staff could address about the requirement to keep affordable homes available for occupancy when the market rate development is available and keep the preference for those who can live in Fordham Homes inclusive. But they said, I think we've addressed that, but they also mentioned former redevelopment and current tax credit standard is a 55-year term of affordability. That should be the minimum. And I wanted to know, I don't remember reading that in our report, so I wanted to be sure. Are we considering that the minimum for affordability, a 55-year minimum?
For any rental units created under the ordinance, it is a 55-year restriction. And for any ownership units, it's a 30-year restriction. So we already have that 55-year minimum in play.
Okay, so that's covered. And then Mid Penn had a whole, they had four bullet points, and they're pretty involved. And so I wasn't sure if you'd had a chance to read what they felt should be included and they felt wasn't currently included. Did you have a chance to read them and comment on them? Sorry to put you on the spot, but I just read this this afternoon, so.
Yeah, and just a thank you, Mayor Howard, for those questions. And a point of clarification, the letters that were included in the staff report were submitted back in July as part of the public comment period. So we did take those letters into consideration as we were developing the proposed amendments. We, as I said earlier, were trying to strike a balance between providing flexibility while also making sure the city has sufficient assurances that ultimately affordable units are produced. So those comments were taken into consideration.
Thank you. So as far as the recommendation, I am in favor of local live-work preference to mitigate residential displacement. Recognizing the housing we've built up to now has been only 10% to 15% for Redwood City residents. We've been saying this for years, that we need to do something to really address the fact that we have a staggering number of people who would love to stay in Redwood City, relocate in Redwood City, may have an opportunity or are in jeopardy of leaving Redwood City. And here we have a chance to really make a difference at a local level. So I'm not inclined to offer this to neighboring communities. I am in favor of studying, at some point, North Fair Oaks because that makes sense. We do share many things, and it's like one community. Most of the time, I'd like to believe, and this would certainly be something I'd consider. But to surrounding communities, my message is, please do the same. Please do what we're preparing to do, which is a bold move, and do more of the same, build more housing, and offer this as something for live-work preference for your communities. We'd really appreciate that help to bring down the jobs-housing imbalance. So I think assurances for delivery of, okay, I think we've answered that. I am in, as far as clarifications or additional, I had here a note that I would be in favor of retroactivity. I know it was mentioned that there's no risk, apparently. And I think as early as possible that we can do, have projects available to people who live and work in our community, the better. So I would be in favor of making it retroactive as early as April 26th. I'm not sure how others feel about that, but maybe someone could put that in their motion if they were supportive of that also. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, oh, excuse me, Ms. Ramirez, did you want to comment to something I might have said?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to address that last point and let the council know that the ordinance that is currently proposed by staff already includes the affordable housing amendments as being applicable to any project not deemed complete as of April 26th. So you already have that retroactive application in the current ordinance that's proposed before you. It would be, we would need to make a modification if the council was not interested.
I see. Thank you so much for that clarification. That makes it so much easier. I appreciate that. So I guess at this point, I'd like to ask the council if they'd like to make a motion and a second for this affordable housing ordinance.
So moved, Espinoza Garnica?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Espinoza Garnica and seconded by Councilmember Aguirre. And we'll have the roll call vote. Ms. Aguilar?
Thank you. We'll start with Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G?
Yes.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale?
Yes.
And Mayor Howard?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you to our staff so very much. I really appreciate all the hard work. My thanks to Housing Human Concerns and the Planning Commission, who probably worked also very hard on this. So thank you so much for bringing this to us this evening. Moving on to item 7B, which is a request for a general plan amendment initiation of the amended project at 901 El Camino Real. This initiation of the amended project supersedes the initiation of the prior project. Our Assistant Community Development and Transportation Department Director Sue Exline and Principal Planner Lindy Chan will give the presentation. Ms. Exline?
Good evening, me and Howard and councilmembers. Sue Exline, Assistant Community Development Director. And I'll start tonight by briefly showing some background on the Gatekeeper Process. If you could go to the next slide. The Gatekeeper Process was a way to evaluate pending general plan amendment initiation requests in consideration of city council's strategic priorities. The city council considered the projects over multiple hearings. The August 10, 2020 hearing focused on projects that were predominantly housing and outside the downtown precise plan boundaries. This is September 21, 2020, hearing consisted of projects that are predominantly commercial and within the downtown precise plan area, including 901 El Camino Real. On October 12, 2020, the city council initiated six projects, including 901 El Camino Real. And on May 24, 2021, initiated two additional projects. The focus of tonight's meeting is 901 El Camino Real and whether the city council should initiate the amended project. This presentation will provide an overview of the project changes since the council initiated it last October. To cover the council questions, which I'll include again at the end, does the city council have any final questions for the applicant or staff prior to making a decision to initiate or not initiate the amended project? Is there other information the council needs prior to making a decision? And does the city council wish to initiate and study the amended project? This map shows the location of the eight Gatekeeper projects, with the light blue representing primarily residential projects and the dark blue representing primarily primarily commercial projects. The project at 901 El Camino Real is shown as a number four with a red star below it. The project is within the downtown precise plan area, which is marked on the map with a hatched black outline. I also want to point out the proposed off-site affordable housing, which you'll hear more about tonight, located at 920 Shasta, which is shown in the lower portion of the map as a circle with a star, a white star inside of it. Now I'll turn it over to Principal Planner Lindy Chan to provide your project overview.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Exline. Are you able to see me and hear me okay?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. So I'll start by providing some context on the initiated project. For purposes of direction, I'll reference El Camino Real with a north-south direction. The project site is located adjacent to the Sequoia Station on the south, the Transit Center to the east, Broadway and retail shops to the north, and Sequoia High School to the west. As previously noted, on October 12, 2020, the city council initiated the project, which included a 154,000-square-foot office with a total height of 90 feet and seven stories, a separate 4,000-square-foot teen center in a two-story building, and that's shown there in the corner, a 4,000-square-foot public open space, which is called the Chrysanthemum Plaza, and that separated the office and the teen center, and then 60 off-site affordable housing units at 2529 Broadway, and that's shown in the upper right corner. The off-site affordable housing is approximately 17,000 square feet, and again, that's in the upper right corner of this slide and is within the proposed transit district, which is shown in purple. Future track expansion is being studied as part of the Caltrain Business Plan, which could impact a portion of this property. These factors raise concerns to the applicant and their ability to construct the affordable units within their desired timeframe. Next slide, please. In response, the applicant proposes a revised off-site location for their affordable housing, located at 920 Shasta Street, and that's shown in the red square. The 31,300-square-foot site is currently occupied by a self-storage facility, is within the mixed-use transitional zoning district, and is near the now-approved Gray Star South Main Mixed Use Project, and that's shown in the upper left corner in yellow. Multi-family residential uses are permitted uses within the zoning district, and existing residential uses currently exist to the north of the site, and that's in the block between Buckeye and Pine Streets. While this location is further from the downtown, it does remain in close proximity to transit goods and services at approximately 0.8 miles to the Transit Center, 0.3 miles to a major transit stop on El Camino, 0.4 miles to the Target Shopping Center, which is to the south, and 0.3 miles to parks, notably the Main Street Dog Agility Park and the Hardin Daimenos. Next slide, please. Since the transit district or the transit center in 901 Since the transit district or the transit center and nine oh one El Camino Real projects are being evaluated for potential redevelopment through the Tanza District and Gatekeeper Land Use Planning Process, it created an opportunity to realize the envisioned Downtown Precise Plan Street Network, which is shown in this slide. The Downtown Precise Plan calls for establishing a better street grid by eliminating California Street between James and Minko Black and extending Franklin Street beyond Sequoia Station, and that's shown in the dashed yellow circle there. In addition to the street network, the land swap would allow for improved potential developments, access, parking and public open space, which I'll discuss further in the upcoming slides. Next slide. So I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this slide. It's a bit complicated. So this is the proposed land swap. On the left is the existing configuration and on the right is the proposed configuration with the land swap. So we'll walk you through those details, starting with the left side. On the left side, the parcels in blue are owned by the applicant for nine oh one El Camino Real. The lower pork chop shaped parcel along El Camino would support the office and teen center, while the upper rectangular parcel along Broadway provided the affordable housing in the initiated project. The affordable housing would be relocated to Shasta Street. This opened discussions about how this parcel could be used. The Joint Powers Board, or JPB, also known as Caltrain, owns the area in purple, which supports the current Transit Center. And the land swap would entail swap between twenty-five, twenty-nine Broadway, which is the area shown in blue and labeled number one, being swapped with a portion of the existing Transit Center parking lot, which is a purple area within the dashed yellow line, and that's labeled number two. So shifting to the right side shows the proposed configuration if parcels one and two were swapped. JPB's parcel, a new parcel is shown east of the New Franklin Street Extension in purple and nine oh one El Camino Real's parcel would be the area west of the new street and shown in blue. The area in green would be the open space, which would be redeveloped as part of the nine oh one El Camino Real project. So this land swap would provide some potential real benefits, both to the city and to the applicants. First, as I previously noted, it would realize the envisioned Downtown Precise Plan Street Network, which provides for a better circulation and grid with better connections to the Transit Center and better connections through Sequoia Station and to the downtown. It also improves circulation by increasing the distance between James and El Camino Real, which are currently in close proximity and creates queuing challenges. James Avenue serves as the main access to the Transit Center with all buses, buses accessing the depot through this street, as well as a high volume of pedestrians crossing at this intersection, given its proximity to a high school, the Transit Center and Sequoia Station Shopping Center. The land swap would also improve potential development opportunities for both nine oh one El Camino Real and the JPB parcel. Each would be squared off with improved access, parking and building shapes. The JPB parcel would likely get redeveloped if the Transit Center Station were to shift to the north to allow for improved transit service with four tracks in the downtown. However, in the near term, the existing Transit Center and associated parking remain operational and can be maintained with the land swap. Open space would also be more regularly configured and activated with adjacent uses. The Joint Powers Board has entered into exclusive negotiating agreement to facilitate the land swap and is beginning these negotiations. Next slide. This slide shows a comparison of the initiated project on the left and the amended project on the right. The amended project would maintain key elements of the initiated project, so the office, teen center, affordable housing and Chrysanthemum Plaza, but with increased community benefits, such as more affordable housing, increased public open space commensurate with the proposed increases in the office space. While the building height remains at ninety feet for both the initiated and the amended project, the number of stories would be lower from seven stories to six stories. So we'll just walk you through the changes in each of those types of uses. So the office space would be increased from a hundred and fifty-four thousand square feet to two hundred and fifty-nine thousand square feet, which is an increase of about sixty-eight percent. The affordable housing increased from sixty units to one hundred units, or sixty-seven percent increase. The teen center increased from five thousand square feet to eight thousand square feet, or a sixty percent increase. The open space increased from four thousand square feet to approximately fifteen thousand square feet, two hundred and eighty-one square foot increase. Added retail component to the project, previously not part of the project, and that totals three thousand square feet, as well as proposing the street grid for the Downtown Precise Plan. So that's a new component to the project. Next slide. While the key components of the initiated project remain, some features of the amended project include the Chrysanthemum Plaza being shifted towards Franklin Street Extension and being anchored by the teen center, which remains on the right-hand side, as well as two new retail spaces. So the retail spaces are shown in the red coloration. The teen center is maintained along James Street, but revised to a single story with a larger footprint and anchoring the plaza in green. The widened pedestrian areas are provided along all of the edges, in particular El Camino Real, as well as James Streets and James Street, providing for a really strong pedestrian connection to the Transit Center, protected by lanes along both El Camino Real and James Street, as well as a new pullout for the El Camino Real bus round, which is the length of two buses. So that's where you see that large rectangle on the bottom of El Camino Real towards Minko Black. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the amended project be initiated by the city council as it meets the council's strategic priorities and the project provides community benefits, which are commensurate to the project changes, which includes more affordable housing, a larger teen center, expanded open space, improved transit facilities and implementation of the Downtown Precise Plan Street Network. The land swap would also provide the Joint Powers Board with a better redevelopment option in the future with the relocation of the Transit Center while maintaining existing operations until that occurs. I will now turn it back over to Sue to conclude the presentation and return with the city council questions.
Thank you, Lindy. Council, before you have the questions again, does the city council have any final questions for the applicant or staff prior to making a decision? To initiate or not initiate the amended project? Is there other information the city council needs prior to making a decision? And finally, does the city council wish to initiate and study the amended project? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. X-line. Thank you, Ms. Chan. That was a very good presentation. And I'm guessing that the developers will probably be speaking under public comment. So we can have a chance to listen to more information and certainly have our questions answered. Thank you. So I will now, are there any clarifying questions before I open up the public hearing? For public comment. Seeing none, I'll turn it over to our city clerk to facilitate public comment. Ms. Aguilar?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. For anybody, for any members of the public who would like to speak on item seven B, this is the project at nine oh one El Camino Real. Now's the time to raise your hand and keep your hand raised so that we could see how many speakers we have.
Ms. Aguilar, while you're doing that, I'd like to ask Ms. Chan, she had her hand raised. Would you like to add some information?
Yes, I do believe that the applicant has a ten-minute presentation as well. So maybe we can give them the ten-minute presentation before opening it up, if that pleases the mayor.
Actually, that would be a wonderful idea. Why don't we start with that and then we can do our public comment? And representing nine oh one El Camino Real would be Mr. Fong?
Hey, Mrs. Howard, or I mean, Mayor Howard.
Okay. I think that's, I think we can move forward on that. I'm checking with Ms. Ramirez on that. Okay, good. Mr. Fong? There you go. It's all yours.
Good evening, Council. My name is John Fong and I'm happy to represent our updated project at nine oh one El Camino and nine twenty Shasta. As you may recall from our original Gatekeeper presentations on September and October 2020, we were one of the three mixed-use projects to receive council's approval for further study. We presented an exciting neighborhood-changing project that combined housing, office, a public plaza and a teen center. Since that time, we've been busy working with city staff to address some specific issues that have been identified with our affordable housing site at twenty-five, twenty-nine Broadway. Through solving these problems, this project has significantly improved and I'm looking forward to sharing how we got here and what those improvements are. Next slide. Next slide. So last time we came to you, our affordable housing was at twenty-five, twenty-nine Broadway. Unfortunately, as we advanced our design for this site, we learned that a potential four-track Caltrain expansion would conflict with our project by overlapping the corner of the Broadway site. This created obstacles for both the transit district, but more importantly, created hurdles to providing a desirable solution for our sixty homes of affordable housing. To solve this problem, we obtained nine twenty Shasta. Nine twenty Shasta provides a better option for our affordable housing commitment and allows for more flexibility with respect to how the transit district can develop over time. Next slide. With nine twenty Shasta now available for affordable housing, it opened up a conversation between the city, the Joint Powers Board, i.e. Caltrain, and ourselves as to what to do with the Broadway site and how to eliminate the conflicts it had within the transit district. City staff also observed that there was a desire in the Downtown Precise Plan to extend Franklin Street, and this led to collaborative conversations between the city, the Joint Powers Board and our team to explore all potential improvements. We explored concepts that allowed physical changes to the various parcels that created mutually desirable outcomes for all parties. Taking our twenty-five, twenty-nine Broadway site and swapping that land with a similarly sized Caltrain parcel would create the following win-win scenario for all parties. Next slide. So more conventionally shaped parcels allow for efficient planning for future railway expansion of Caltrain with little or no impact on existing transit operations. A new bus transit duck out that relieves traffic congestion and creates a safer and more efficient pedestrian access route between the station and bus stops. Streets that align with the future Sequoia Station and accomplishes the Downtown Precise Plan goals of a new grid with improved traffic and pedestrian use. Next slide. And finally, a larger contiguous development site, which allows for our project to grow in size and unlocks proportionally more robust set of community benefits. Next slide. Next slide. So let me go over the community benefits. We've continued to heed the call by the community and council to propose a project that maximizes the amount of affordable housing we can provide. At nine twenty Shasta, we can provide a hundred homes, an increase of forty homes from what we previously proposed with the same unit mix, a majority two and three-bedroom homes for families and the same affordability, majority at extremely low and very low income levels. Next slide. Next slide. We wanted to tell a story that's dear to my heart when we came up with Chrysanthemum Plaza. It's a sobering yet uplifting story of how the Redwood City community helped Japanese-American Chrysanthemum farmers get back on their feet following World War II internment. The hope is that this plaza can be a source of inspiration to bring our community together, especially given all the divisions we face today. Next slide. So I'm thrilled to share that Chrysanthemum Plaza is now more than double the size at over fifteen thousand square feet. The expanded and more centralized public space gives us more room to tell the story with more amenities like the elevated tier seating, where we can hold public events in the plaza like Shakespeare in the Park. And with two new retail spaces, it will add more life in the plaza. Next slide. Next slide. So Redwood City teens spoke in front of city council more than two years ago, but about how they lack space for themselves in Redwood City and it's only become even more needed among our youth during this pandemic. We've continued to understand from the teen and youth advisory boards about how today's teens in Redwood City see themselves and their place in this community, and now we're able to grow the space to eight thousand square feet, which will provide the teens with more variety of spaces, which will give them more opportunities to prepare and succeed in the future. Our proposed teen center is a testament to their voices in the downtown and the larger community. Next slide. Next slide. So we continue to be a gateway to downtown Redwood City and being at the nexus of transportation, we've only made this connection stronger and more accessible. For example, we are creating the new bus duck out on El Camino Real that doesn't exist today and that creates better flow for buses and commuters. And on James, we expand the sidewalk so there's increased pedestrian safety when the teens come across from Sequoia High School. Next slide. So in conclusion, through trying to solve problems, we have created a better project through much thought and collaboration with city staff and the Joint Powers Board. We now have a more conventionally shaped parcel, parcels that allow for efficient planning for future Caltrain railway expansion. Our parcel allows us for us to build a more efficient and larger office building. But at the same time, our affordable housing proportionally grows to a hundred family homes. Our grid now aligns with the Downtown Precise Plan and improved traffic, transportation, pedestrian access and safety, while increasing the amount of open space with our Chrysanthemum Public Plaza that will bring more life and events to this part of downtown. And lastly, I'm really excited for our teens who have been clamoring for space for years and we can provide them with significantly more than we originally planned. So as I said earlier, this is a win-win for everyone and I'm happy to be able to share this with you. Next slide. Council, thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fong. I appreciate the presentation. So at this time, I think we'll open it up to public comment and I'll turn it over to our city clerk if she could initiate the public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now's the time, as mentioned, for public comment on seven B, the project at nine oh one El Camino Real. Please raise your hand and keep your hand raised so that we can see how many speakers we have. Thank you for those who have patiently kept your hands raised. We'll give it another minute. If you've joined us by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Okay, couple more seconds. Hey, Mayor Howard. At this time, we have six members of the public with raised hands. So I will call your names two at a time. You'll have two minutes to make your public comment. The timer will start when you begin speaking. Our first speaker will be Colin User Number One. Our last speaker is going to be Rona Gundrum. And Colin User Number One will be followed by Kalisha Webster. Go ahead. Colin User One, you can press star six to unmute yourself. There you go.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marcellina Luna, a longtime resident of Redwood City. The new proposed development still shows a building or development on Broadway. So the reasoning that there's concerns for the grave separation seem kind of not really honest to me. So I am asking the city council to not approve this and to keep the affordable housing building where it was originally proposed at twenty-five, twenty-nine Broadway. The grave separation is just being used as an excuse as to why not to have this building where it was originally proposed in prime space downtown. We need more affordable housing in downtown Redwood City so that more members of our community can enjoy the benefits. Moving this project to nine twenty Shasta will continue to maintain the segregation of low-income families and communities of color. Furthermore, this site is next to a high-traffic and high-air pollution area next to Woodside Road and El Camino. As I have come to learn, our communities are segregated on purpose by policy our elected officials passed. I'm asking you to please end this. You have the power to bring change that benefits everyone living in Redwood City. Keep the affordable housing units at twenty-five, twenty-nine Broadway. Since they're still increasing the plaza, the office space, the roads, there is space there to build this. So let's keep it there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Luna. Our next speaker is Kalisha Webster and Ms. Webster will be followed by Chris Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Howard and city council members. My name is Kalisha Webster and I am a housing advocate for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities with housing choices. I am calling in support of the proposed changes to the affordable housing component of the nine oh one El Camino Real Mixed Use Project. The proposed addition of forty units of affordable housing, if the project were to be allowed to relocate to nine twenty Shasta, will help to meet the growing need for affordable housing in Redwood City as reflected in the increased arena numbers for the upcoming housing element. From the work that Housing Choices does, helping people throughout San Mateo County with developmental disabilities find independent housing, we see the increased need firsthand as rents continue to increase every year, making it more difficult for individuals and families to afford fair market rents. Redwood City is home to nearly seven hundred individuals with a developmental disability, of which over four hundred adults over the age of eighteen. Others adults, nearly fifty percent, are still living at Others adults, nearly fifty percent, are still living at home with aging parents. Due to the high cost of housing and shortage of affordable units, we encourage families to start planning for their family member with a disability's housing at least five to ten years in advance so that they can get onto a waitlist before a housing crisis occurs. Unfortunately, every day we see more emergency housing referrals for our services with few options available to help these clients. One such client that we worked with was fortunate enough to receive a mainstream voucher from Housing Authority last year. Prior to receiving her voucher and moving into her own one-bedroom apartment in Redwood Shores, she rented an unfinished basement with a road infestation in Redwood City for five years. She was able to receive the emergency mainstream voucher because Housing Authority deemed her living conditions unfit for human habitation. However, the mainstream voucher program, which has been the main support for people with developmental disabilities experiencing housing crisis in San Mateo County, has not accepted any new referrals since October twenty twenty with no known estimates of when they may reopen this program. In the meantime, Housing Choices has continued to work with clients experiencing housing crises and done our best to try to find other options to avoid homelessness or displacement away from their community and support systems. Affordable housing projects, the one being proposed at nine-twenty Shasta, help to bring hope to so many enemies. I urge the council to initiate a proposal.
Thank you very much, Ms. Webster. Our next speaker is Chris Johnson, and Mr. Johnson will be followed by Clara Jackal. Go ahead, Chris.
Good evening. I dialed in late and I caught the tail end of the last agenda item and missed public comment. That said, my comments for this item will hold true for both items. While the increase in affordable housing for this project is applauded and the creative approach to affordable housing in the last item is commanded, what's missing yet again is a true jobs-housing imbalance analysis. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica has been asking for this practically since the first day she was in office. With over seven million square feet of office space in the pipeline, equal to twenty-eight thousand new office workers to Redwood City, this affordable housing we're talking about tonight is just a drop in the bucket as compared to the true impact. Where is the data to show how we are trending? What's it going to take? Eight million square feet of office space? Ten million square feet? Every day that goes by without a directive by council to officially start analysis is another day that you're telling the vulnerable residents of Redwood City that you don't care. In closing, I believe the environmental issues also need to be studied regarding pollution impacts at this location at the corner of Woodside Road and El Camino. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Clara Jackal, and Ms. Jackal will be followed by Adrian Brandt.
Yes, thank you. My name is Clara Jackal. I am concerned to see the proposal to move the affordable housing units planned for this project away from a site next to the main site to a separate location. Although the increase in the number of proposed affordable units does sound attractive, the new proposed location at nine-twenty Shasta is farther away from transit services, including the train station, as well as all the downtown amenities. And the Shasta Street location is also, as mentioned by previous speakers, right next to the busy intersection and off-ramp of Woodside and El Camino exposed to increased noise and traffic-related air pollution. Additionally, it's desirable to keep affordable housing within mixed-income neighborhoods. Research cited by the Housing Matters Urban Institute Initiative shows that residents of mixed-income developments report greater satisfaction with housing quality and neighborhood services. And children can experience educational health and behavioral benefits from moving to an income-diverse area. So I would ask the council to consider very closely the disadvantages that lower-income residents are being asked to accept at that location and commit to providing neighborhood services and infrastructure equitably to sites where affordable housing is being developed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackal. Our next speaker is Adrian Brandt, and Mr. Brandt will be followed by our last speaker, Rona Gundrum.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'd like to speak in support of this alteration. The Caltrain business planning process that went on for probably better part of two years, I neglected to time how long it took, but it was quite involved. And it has as its linchpin really essentially for the service vision of the entire line. This four-track midline station that we're going to be fortunate enough to, you know, be the host of. Certainly, there are some impacts, but they're greatly outweighed by the transportation and mobility advantages. And so I think a previous speaker suggested that this was a speculative aspect and not to be, not to be, you know, used as an excuse or something. I want to emphasize that this is, this is critical. I think Councilmember G can speak this much more eloquently as I could, but I wanted to definitely hit on that. I also support this because the street network is clearly better, the layout, the way the different streets will be realigned. And the increased density, the increased height is also very desirable, the increased plaza size. Research has shown over and over that the best bang for the buck is to locate jobs at transit. Whether we like it or not, that actually has a better transit nexus impact than housing does. And that's, you know, so that is, that is important because if these jobs don't get built here, they will be built somewhere else, and it will be a lot less sustainable. I can hardly think of a more sustainable place in the city with better transit access to the East Bay in the future with the Dunbar and Rail and being at the center of the Caltrain line. We have the best service of any station, midline station, and will for the foreseeable future. So and extremely walkable community, very progressive. This is the way to go. Please support it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brandt. Our final speaker on this item is Rona Gundrum.
Hi, good evening, council members. I would like to agree with the previous speaker on the points that he made. I also think this is a very exciting proposal, that the layout makes a lot more sense. The, I'd also like to praise the developer for working collaboratively with the city, the Joint Powers Board, and the community. We definitely need a lot more of that. I think the increase in affordable housing is a definite plus. I do understand the move, the concerns about moving housing away from transit, but having office space by transit will definitely take more cars off of the one oh one freeway, which is very much needed. I do like the fact that the height of the building will be coming down one story and the increase in the amount of open space and giving teams a larger place to gather productively and faithfully. And I do hope that the council does vote in favor of this project change. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gundrum, and that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much, Ms. Aguilar. I will now close the public hearing and open it up to council discussion. Who would like to begin? Vice Mayor Hale.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to start with a few questions. First of all, there was a question about the the potential conflicts with the four-track train, and I'm wondering if either staff or the applicant would want to speak further to that question. It was, I think it was posed by a member of the public. If you, Councilmember Hale, if we could go back to, I believe it was slide five. If I got that correct. Okay, let's go to slide six. One more then. Okay, slide, next one. This one here. So in the upper, upper corner of what's shown as parcel one, on the left side, it's, it's in blue, and on the right side, it's purple. You'll see where the track expansion is shown with the blue line, and it cuts across the top of the site. What that shows is the potential area, that land that would be needed for the four-track expansion. And as you can see here, it has the potential to just click the corner of that site. Again, this is very preliminary in our studies, and we're still obviously analyzing what the potential needs for the four-track station would be. But it would have a potential impact to the corner. In the right side, if it were merged with the JPB parcel, the Joint Powers Board, then they would have control over that site and the ability to, you know, address a redevelopment that could anticipate that. So just to confirm what I'm seeing here, in the existing configuration, the building would have been built onto that little corner. In the new configuration, it would not be. In either configuration, the development would have to accommodate potential great separation on the four tracks. So it just makes it a little bit easier if it's a larger merge parcel to accommodate the needs of the track expansion. If it were a smaller parcel in and of itself developed as a smaller development, it would have, we would think, greater impacts to what could be built there. Thank you, Ms. Chan. I'm wondering if the developer wanted to add or make any commentary on that.
Yes, I can. I think for us, it was about delivering the sixteen affordable homes as soon as possible. And by being in this kind of within the tracks that would delay that significantly. And that was an issue for us because we wanted to deliver homes as soon as possible because they are needed in our community.
Thank you for that clarification. That is, that is certainly a factor, so I appreciate that. I wanted to speak to the concerns around air quality. Certainly, a very top-of-mind issue, and there being equity as well around air quality. Really pleased with the work our air quality district has been doing to reduce equity. But I did myself, I had done a Purple Air search, and it showed that the air quality scores on aggregate for the downtown site and for the Shasta site were identical. And they were actually quite good. So I'm wondering if staff found any additional air quality concerns, you know, in their diligence on this decision that we should be aware of. Thank you, Councilmember Hale. It's preliminary in the study, so we've not done that level of analysis yet. Clearly, if the council were to initiate the project, environmental analysis would be part of the evaluation of the project. We've not done that at this stage. Okay, and what types of inputs do you use for air quality research like that outside of what's, you know, now, now there's so many tools publicly available because air quality is so top of mind to so many. It's a great question. So we would likely have an environmental consultant that would assist us with this, this input and have technical studies that would support the project. So I don't think it's something that staff would necessarily initiate on our own in doing the analysis, but would rely on technical studies to support the analysis. Great. And so that would be a part of the EIR process where we would be able to review that data as a part of the project continuing through the process. It doesn't get, the project doesn't get approved this evening. It would be studied, and then we would be able to evaluate those impacts. That's correct. So the nine oh one El Camino Real project and the off-site affordable housing would be studied together. The nine oh one El Camino Real project is within the downtown precise plan, so that is being studied as part of the Gatekeeper Downtown Precise Plan Amendments with its associated EIR. And then the off-site affordable housing would be studied pursuant to CEQA. Okay, that's, that's helpful. I wanted to speak to the concerns about transportation equity, certainly also very important to many. We've expressed that as a council as a priority. While it is not located at the Transit Center, I do believe there are several bus routes that run right in that area. Did you have any information on that? Thank you. Yes, we did do a study of major transit routes and major transit locations. El Camino Real is considered to be a high-volume or major transit location. And there is a bus stop within point three miles of the nine-twenty Shasta location. But it is also close to other major transit routes, as well as a direct connection through Main Street to the downtown and also provides access along Shasta that would get you to other shopping centers such as the, I'm sorry, the Target Center, which is located to the south. And then two more quick questions. One is, there's other developments that council has approved in that area. So will that make for better or enhanced walkability or other modes, even, you know, biking to the Transit Center? I don't recall offhand with the, with the other projects, so if you could elaborate on those. Certainly. So the South Main mixed-use project, also by Gray Star, located just to the north of this project and would provide for increased housing, transportation, Bicycle Boulevard along Lathrip Avenue, as well as, you know, improved access to parks and food services. So as part of the South Main mixed-use project, there'd be increased services along El Camino Real, but also food opportunities and jobs within that vicinity. We also have other projects located as on El Camino Real, near Maple Street, which are being evaluated and are pending projects, so still in the consideration phase. Okay, so there'll be quite a bit of housing in this area in the future. And then I just wanted to make a comment. I believe one of the members of public had mentioned walkability. I did a check, and this site has a walk score of eighty-seven, which is considered to be very walkable, very walkable. So that was interesting, too. Those are all of my questions. I think that the modifications have some good merits that align with our city's goals around housing, transportation, children, and all three areas. So I don't see any reason not to support this, but I'm looking forward first to hearing the feedback from my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Hi, yes. Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to ask more of the specifics about how we got our numbers for office space to housing because we, this is requiring an amendment because we already have a streamline of offices being built. So I want to know how our developer, Mr. Fong, if you could tell us how you came up with or like what you speculate the office space to, to bring in in terms of revenue compared to the actual cost of building affordable housing and the teen center and such. In general, because the goal is to get equivalent jobs to housing. So if you could just, you know, speculate the cost of affordable housing compared to what you speculate this office space would bring, I would love to hear. And like where you, where you source this from? Because I know the market's speculative, but it's like, I want to know.
Yeah, I don't know if there's exact dollar amounts, but it's the office unlocks the housing. And so the proportion of office that we have hasn't changed to the amount of housing that we're proposing. I mean, we've always tried to figure out how could we provide more housing. And I think the great thing again about Shasta, it's a bigger site, so we're able to unlock and provide more housing.
Right, but do you think you could foresee a future with equal jobs to housing? And if, if not, what obstacles are there for you as a developer? I'm new, so just, you can speak frankly. I know it's kind of maybe obvious, but I want to know like what obstacles are you facing in this specific?
No, no, I love your questions. I'm just trying to understand. I provide the right answers. Can you repeat that one more time?
Yeah, and just, because ideally, we would have equivalent amount of housing to the amount of employees we expect to have at this site. So like what's stopping you? Like what, like what is, how much does it cost for office space? I just want to hear like what you speculate it's going to bring you, and like how much of that is going to the affordable housing?
I think, I mean, when we're talking about affordable housing, it's a huge cost to get there. And so, I mean, we have affordable housing partners. And even then, I mean, trying to find the financing and to get this project moving at a hundred homes is really difficult. There's different state laws and state taxes that we're trying to access that's even, even difficult to make the hundred units pencil out or to get to that point. So I think, again, the office is something, again, land's expensive, the office is expensive, all this is, but this office is helping, again, supplement the four plaza.
Yeah, okay, understood. I just wanted to share that, like, I also agree that, I imagine that it's also Understood. I just wanted to share that, like, I also agree that the, I imagine that it's also near a, it is, this site, this new site is still somewhat close to downtown. It's about 15 minute walk from Sequoia Station. But I kind of want to speak to like a comment that someone raised and not in our attendees that it'd be best to house this in a in a more income diverse area. But as many have noted, this is, our city is segregated. So I don't think we have any zoned area that is mixed income or rich in that. So I just wanted to, I guess, kind of put that out there because this new unit, this new housing is in my district where it's filled with low income housing and apartments. But it's not going to Mount Carmel, you know, which is a higher affluent single home residence zone area. So I don't think we have one yet in Redwood City, but I hope that, you know, to build low income housing closer to downtown and all of these, you know, zones that have amenities, it'd be best to start with our zoning laws to make them more inclusive. Because I don't think we have one yet that's economically rich. But again, I guess for the, I would like to be reminded also for maybe some attendees, like, what's an update on the anti-displacement stuff that was mentioned earlier in the budget that we've had? Because I know that's in the works. So this is going to be something for review for us soon, I believe.
Ms. Diaz, I know that's planned for a future meeting.
Yes, that's planned for a discussion in November.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right, great. I guess those are all my questions mostly. I am concerned about the imbalance because we are seeing here 2,500 or so new employees potentially, if you say there's 100 square feet for each employee and only 100 units. So I would, I would say that is just a job in the water. So it is hard to approve this when this, we've already met our cap for office space is kind of where I'm at. That's all.
Well, for clarification, I'd like to ask, office space, office square footage of 259,000. Isn't there a formula to figure about how many employees would be occupying that space? Could someone just address that? I know it's a formula and it may be plus or minus, but I know there is a formula available to estimate how many employees may go into a 259,000 space of office space? I'm not sure who to ask that. Ms. Chan, would you like to tackle that one?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. I can certainly try. We, there obviously is a change in how employees are using the office space. And so what, that ratio was pre-pandemic and what it will be post-pandemic, we're still in the studies of evaluating that. I think that the office use will be a lot less dense post-pandemic than it has been historically. I believe the ratio was one employee per 250 square feet roughly. So for an office of this size, it would be approximately 1,036 employees using that ratio of 1 to 250. But again, we are still doing the analysis to see whether or not that ratio is going to change with changes in the post-pandemic world.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I guess it will. I predict it probably will. But, okay, thank you. Councilmember Ready?
Thank you very much, Mayor Howard. First, I want to acknowledge staff for having the transit quarter on your radar to such an extent that you're able to advise the developer about something that might happen in five or 10 years. And because you did that, he was able, the developer was able to make a decision that has really, and I acknowledge and thanks the developer for this really beautiful new project. I'm very supportive of it. And I'm just really impressed. And we all have heard of communities where decisions were made in kind of a spotty sort of way. And it interfered with what might have been a more organic change in the community had they been looking at things in a larger way. So again, thank you to staff for keeping this and having such a close relationship with our developers, keeping the communication open. Okay, having said that, I am really concerned that the, oh, and I wanted to add also that to my friends in the community who are concerned about moving the Broadway location to 921 Shasta. I encourage us all to go visit that location in 10 years and decide which 40 families should not be there. Because the need for affordable housing is so desperate that we can't just casually say, well, we don't need 40 units here. We need it someplace else. So I just wanted to say that, that I feel very strongly about the movement because it's giving us homes for another 40 families, and that's huge. Having said that, I'm concerned about the four bedrooms. It's very difficult to find residents for four bedroom. It would take an income of $115,000 at the lowest incomes. And it's just really hard to find affordable housing for four bedrooms. And so I'm asking if the developer and my colleagues would consider dropping that to three bedrooms and giving us more ELI at a three bedroom rate? Because even at three bedroom, that's still $1,400 a month, which is really hard to manage. And so you could see that the more members of your family, the higher the rent is and the more difficult it is to qualify for affordable housing when you get into the higher numbers of bedrooms. So I'm asking if the developer and my colleagues might consider just going from a studio to three rather than to four. And to my friends who are not completely happy with this, I am reminded of something that is often used to be said to me, not to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Ms. Chan, did you have your hand raised to address that question or?
My apologies. I just didn't lower my hand.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you. Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and thank you to everyone involved for working on this. This is not an easy situation because of the work that the Caltrain Board is doing. And as has been alluded to, I do also serve on the Caltrain Board as a director. And just so that the record is clear, I did recuse myself from the discussion at the JPB Board, the Caltrain Board, on this item and did not vote on the ENA, choosing not to vote twice and chose to represent the City of Redwood City in my council member capacity. As one of the speakers pointed out, there's no question, while there may be disagreements right now between the member agencies at Caltrain, there is something that the members are agreed upon. And that is achieving the 2040 service vision for Caltrain. Now, that includes the potential of four tracks here in Redwood City, the Dumbarton Rail Corridor, and a potential for a fully grade separated corridor. In 2019, the board voted to approve a corridor-wide grade separation study. That start of that study was delayed because of COVID and now will be started probably imminently as soon as next month. And Redwood City is ahead of that with its study about the grade separations here in Redwood City. But I can assure you that all of the directors on the Caltrain Board are committed to achieving the 2040 Caltrain service vision. One of the things I think that is, has been alluded to is that while today this may not be an ideal location, I would appreciate, Lindsay, if you could probably turn the clock ahead a little bit. It's, as Councilmember Ready suggested, 10 years ahead of time. I think between the Gray Star project and other projects that are being talked about, this will be a mixed income neighborhood and a neighborhood of mix of uses. But I'm, you know, just looking at what's been approved and what's in the pipeline. Am I, I'm missing something or is that a fairly accurate statement?
Thank you, Councilmember G. It certainly is an activity, an area that we are seeing a lot of activity. And I think with the change to mixed-use transitional, mixed-use live-work, opportunities for more housing options. And so we're starting to see a lot of interest. So I think I would agree with that.
And, you know, to the credit of those like the applicant, they want it done sooner than later rather than waiting 10 years. So to the applicant, thank you for trying to create housing sooner than later, affordable housing sooner than later. Perhaps, Lindsay, you could also talk about how the potential of approving this moving forward plays with what the council just approved previously with the live-work preference for Redwood City residents that have been displaced. You know, the applicants proposed 100 homes for families. And how does the ordinance that we just passed go together with this new 100 units of homes? How could that work?
Thank you. Because the city council is considering the amendments to the affordable housing, this would have impact to the project that's before you for consideration as it's still an incomplete project and would be just studying, if the council were to initiate this, it would begin a study and a journey. So there would be the live-work preference for this project and for all 100 of those affordable units.
So if all goes well and everything's built, these 100 units would be Redwood City residents that live and work here or have been displaced would have a priority? Is that a fair statement?
I believe that's the case, a priority or a preference for those that live or work.
Very good. My apologies for using the wrong words. Maybe a preference. Cool. And then to follow up on Councilmember Espinoza Garnica's question, and this is probably more for the applicant. You know, I think, John, you mentioned that the office unlocks the potential to create the housing. And I think we have another land use economics study session coming up in a few weeks. Now, right now, and nothing has changed from what I know, the cost to create a unit of housing, like you proposed, is anywhere from $500 to $800,000 a unit with the more bedrooms sort of leaning to the higher end of that range. Could you, what would happen if we were to say reduce office in half? Still create the 100 units and we want them all at VLI or ELI, would you require a subsidy?
Yes, I mean, we could not deliver those 100 units. There's no way.
Because the construction cost still stays the same. The construction cost doesn't change.
Well, they're actually going higher. So, yes.
And so the part of it is just how does the economics work to make this happen? And unfortunately, this is sort of the connection unless we provide a subsidy somehow to help offset those costs. Is that a fair statement?
Correct. I mean, there is a project in Mountain View that's getting built right now and it's about over $1 million a unit.
Yeah, I know the City of Alameda did one also over $1 million a unit, too. No, I think, you know, there's been a lot of hard work to try to solve a problem. Credit to everyone involved to create housing sooner than later, family-sized units in a neighborhood that will be changing fairly quickly over the next five to eight years. And like I said earlier, I can assure you that the Caltrain Board is committed to achieving this 2040 service plan. The hard part is these things just take a long time to figure out exactly where the lines are with where the railroad wants to be and how much land is needed. So I would be supportive of moving this forward to study the merits of the project. I know this approval is not approving the project, but to continue moving forward and evaluating its merits and its environmental consequences. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you. Councilmember Giada?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to really thank our staff for coming up with this creative way of moving forward with this project and also the developer. As I studied this project, I was excited to see that there were going to be more housing units. If you think about what the goal is, is to build housing near transit or near areas that people can get to grocery stores and and actually be able to get on their bikes and do things, I think that's our goal. And we're behind on the number of units that we have to really come forward for Rina and for other things. And many of our cities around us are not looking at these things and being as creative. And we think of Redwood City, we do have larger parcels, but we don't have a lot of area that can be developed. And to find areas where we can add affordable housing is really hunting and looking. As was mentioned, we're not going to go into the neighborhoods. We're looking into areas that are feasible. And there aren't many. There aren't many left downtown. There aren't many even within the Sequoia Station area, which is more downtown, or going to Veterans, which is being built. So I applaud the creativity of looking at that. And I'd rather see housing that's going to be vibrant than storage units in our city, no matter where they are, whether they're on Jefferson or Veterans or Shasta. And so I'm very supportive of this project. And a lot of the questions I had or concerns have been really been addressed by both staff and some of the questions of my colleagues. I'm not, I'm a little concerned, not concerned, but I want to make sure that we have a variety of housing units. And one of the things we've seen is a lot of studios. And I kind of agree with Councilmember Ready about affordable units when they're four bedrooms. But I want to have those options. I don't want to limit all of them to be studios or have the majority studios, but to have a variety of options for folks that might be able to move there that have larger families. And maybe not the majority of four bedrooms, but I do want to have that option open as we move forward. So I look forward to a vibrant neighborhood in Shasta that some of our neighborhoods downtown that were dilapidated are now vibrant neighborhoods. And I see this as a possibility for this area as well. So I want to thank again our staff and looking at all the options and looking at the transportation possibilities that are going to be happening with Caltrain. And so I'm happy and I look forward to moving this in order to study it further as the amended project.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on this item. I do have a question for the applicant. I'm kind of curious if they've had conversations with the Youth Advisory Committee or any of the teenage folks in our community who will be now, luckily, getting a larger space. And I'm wondering what their kind of feedback was. Any comments there would be great.
Yeah, I think always the bigger space, I think, is better. You know, again, we have a lot of teens in Redwood City that I think are living in conditions and houses that are not as desirable and size-wise. And they feel like the more they can step out and go to a space that is their own, I think is really not available to them in Redwood City at this point.
Yeah, I think that's so well taken, especially in this time of COVID when, you know, not all of the amenities that young people are used to having, they don't have it anymore. And so it's just great to think about moving forward and think about this incredible space that could potentially be available to them. And so, you know, those comments are a little bit indicative of how I'm thinking about the amendments to the proposal that the applicant is bringing down. I would say that I've spoken to several folks in the community about the change that the applicant is bringing down. I spoke to the applicant a few days ago and I got some feedback. And I think people are really interested and excited about this change. I actually think, not to completely disagree with Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, but I think that this affordable housing project is actually in my district. It's in District Four. And I know that we would be so proud and so thrilled to have few additional units in our, in our district. It is a district that is relatively close to the Transit Center, about .3 miles away. And we are a community that is changing very quickly. And it's great to have an anchor of affordable housing within my district. And I'm going to continue to advocate for it. So I think that this is the right place. I think that the applicant was, as well as city staff, incredibly thoughtful, forward-thinking and prescient about the exigencies that the Transit District is going to bring forward as we move forward. So I really appreciate the applicant just being amenable to thinking about the longer-term implications of this project in reference to our city. So I mean, I think for all of those reasons, we must move forward. So I I mean, I think for all of those reasons, we we must move forward with considering um, this project within the amendment to the general plan. Um, of course, as we all know, this doesn't mean that the the project is approved, but I do think that the right steps have been taken up until this point to get further considerations. So I want to, you know, thank again the applicant. I want to thank my colleagues for the excellent questions. Very, very much agree with a lot of what has been said tonight, and I look forward to considering this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Before I ask my questions, I see that Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, you have your hand raised. Did you have something you would like to add?
Oh, no, not at all. I just kept it up on accident.
Okay. Thank you. I I want to thank my council colleagues for the excellent, excellent questions. I have very little to add, I I must admit. But I do want to thank our staff. I want to thank Lyndy Chan and I understand Diana Odell worked with Ms. Chan, both of you. And just thank you so much for really, really thanking outside the box and helping this applicant who, in my opinion, truly wants to do the right thing by this community. From a teen center to affordable housing, the things, the statements you make, Mr. Fong, just give me that impression that that you're really invested in our community in a good way and want to see it just get better over time. So I want to thank all of you for this excellent presentation and this revision. I have to admit with Mr. Brandt, the street orientation around this revision is so much more improved. It was pretty squirrely before, and I'm so much in favor of the new orientation as well as making it easier for us to move forward with doing the four rail transit. I know it's well into the future, but the more we can get out of the way to do the the transit we need to do, the better off we are. So thank you for working on that. I did have, I want to ask Mr. Fong two questions. One was, uh, it was mentioned about studio to four bedroom, and I wanted to ask what your reasoning was for doing the four bedroom and wanted to ask you to comment on what Councilmember Ready brought up.
Yes, happy to. Um, you know, we heard from our housing, affordable housing partner Hip Housing, actually a few weeks ago, that four bedrooms actually don't rent out very well in our community. Uh, we originally put in the four bedrooms because we thought it was a need, but we definitely will study what is the appropriate mix because we want these units to be rented out. Uh, we want these to be fully occupied. So I think Councilmember Ready makes a good point and we'll be studying it in the next few months.
So I'm guessing we don't have to make any kind of an amendment or motion. You're already studying it, and I think between you and your not, you know, your nonprofit. I think it's, uh, is it Mid Penn or is it Hip Housing? I'm not.
Hip Housing.
Thank you, Hip Housing. I'm sorry. Uh, I I'm sure you'll make the right decision because you're right. You do want them to be rented. So I I get a sense that your judgment will be in good play, in a good place to make that decision. I also wanted to ask you about the, um, it was brought up to, uh, brought it out about ninety foot or six stories. And would you mind ask, uh, would you mind just giving me some examples, comparable examples that our community can relate to as that what does ninety foot look like, maybe along El Camino Real or in and around El Camino Real?
Yeah, the new housing projects along El Camino Real have the same height limit. So the projects you see like are, they're the same height that we'd be proposing or that we proposed.
It's same height. Okay, that that's good to know. I I appreciate that because I I don't count stories anymore. I count the height because that really is a deceptive quality. Certain things require a higher roof line and and you just you need to understand what ninety foot means when you say the ninety foot. So thank you for the clarification. And thank, and thank you for choosing the Shasta neighborhood. I I am familiar with the area and I really appreciate what Councilmember Smith said. I I agree with the comments that have been made about. I think this is a great benefit and certainly would be very proud to have that in the neighborhood, and I think it will be quite an asset. So I look forward to you getting started as quickly as possible. And, uh, I have nothing further, just to say thank you for coming this evening and thank you to our staff to bring this to our attention. And I think at this time, I'd like to see if we could entertain a motion and a second. Vice Mayor Hale.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make the motion to adopt the resolution initiating a general plan amendment for nine nine oh one El Camino Real as amended.
Thank you. And a second would.
Diana Ready.
Oh, thank you. A second by Councilmember Ready. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, we'll start with Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
No.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica opposes.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item number eight, a study session on shared micro-mobility services in Redwood City. Our transportation manager Jessica Manzi and senior transportation planner Malahat Orang will give a presentation. Ms. Manzi, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale and members of the city council. Uh, as mentioned, I'm Jessica Manzi, your transportation manager. Tonight, I'm going to give you a brief introduction to this item before I hand it off to my colleague Malahat Orang. During the presentation, please keep these questions in mind. They will be repeated at the end of the presentation. At a high level, the question is, should we proceed with creating a shared micro-mobility program? And if so, are there specific topics that should be addressed in the implementing documents? First, I want to make sure everybody knows what we're talking about. Shared micro-mobility, in addition to being a tongue twister, is the term used to describe programs that offer shared devices like bicycles or scooters to the public for a fee. The devices are typically used for short trips and often complement public transit service to fill the first last mile gap between where someone gets off a bus or train and their final destination. What we're discussing tonight is amending our municipal codes to allow third parties to rent shared micro-mobility devices to the public in Redwood City. In developing our program, we have leveraged our local experience with Bike Share, conversations with vendors, lessons learned from other cities who have active programs, and partnerships with regional agencies like Caltrain and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Our primary interest in allowing shared micro-mobility operations is its ability to advance the city's goals around a micro around mobility and climate sustainability while also supporting the recovery of our local businesses. Due to recent changes in state law, micro-mobility vendors are prohibited from operating in jurisdictions without a permit. Moving ahead with a shared micro-mobility program with its associated ordinance, administrative regulations and fees would allow vendors to apply for a permit to operate in Redwood City and clearly outline our expectations for how they operate. Now I'll hand over the presentation to Malahat, who will provide some more details about our expectations based on what we've learned from others.
Hello. Good evening. I am Malad Orang, Senior Transportation Planner with Redwood City Community Development and Transportation Department. Um, so now I'm going to give you, um, the presentation in more detail on what we're proposing in our ordinance and administrative regulations. First of all, we are recommending to rename chapter eight of our municipal code from bicycles to macro-mobility devices and operation to accommodate the changes we are recommending to the ordinance. Um, so now what does the proposed ordinance cover? First of all, it talks about what is required for permit issuance. And generally, the process on how the operators can request for permit renewal, permit amendment and to request to expand their fleet. It also talks about, um, how operators are responsible to comply with local regulations and also the state and federal regulations in terms of device safety, speed, parking and other elements. The ordinance also talks about enforcement for permitted operators that are not following the adopted regulations or for devices that are not permitted and they found in Redwood City. The ordinance also talks about revoking or suspending permits. An appeal process for operators who their permits are revoked or suspended or their application is denied. Next slide, please. So the administrative regulation gives more details about what we are requiring a permitted operators to do. There's a list, here's a list of items, very high level summary of what we are included in our proposed administrative regulations. Um, I'm going to use one or two of these and go into more details about what we are requiring. First of all, it talks about fleet size, what is the minimum and maximum fleet size we are allowing our operators to have. And of course, they can apply to reduce or expand their fleet size. And our regulation also includes device requirement, what types of, for example, electric bikes are allowed in Redwood City. And we are requiring our permitted operators to have some capability on devices such as geofencing capability and have GPS. Geofencing might be of your interest is um, something like a virtual geography boundary that, um, it's a technology that created by GPS and it allows operators to send notification to the riders or do a speed management or do other necessary actions that they have to do or send messages. For example, the places that we can use geofencing technology, imagine there is an event in downtown and we don't want shared scooters or bicycles to enter that specific zone in that specific day. So that's where we are using geofencing technology. And the other element that is included in the regulation is parking, which has been an issue for many cities. And we learn from other cities what we include in our parking requirement and in our regulation. It lists the places that these devices are not allowed to park and the proper way of parking these devices. The regulation also talks about customer service requirements, inclusive service for low-income community members and community members with disabilities, insurance requirements, fees, which I'm going to explain more in the next slide, and also maintenance, inspection, monitoring and rebalancing requirement. Rebalancing means redistributing the fleet, um, for example, at the end of the day or midday to make sure that the devices that are, for example, rented from Caltrain station distributed throughout the different parts of the city, they are back in their place or wherever it is needed. The regulation also talks about community outreach and education requirements and data sharing and reporting. Next slide, please. As part of this program, we are proposing three types of fees. These fees are set based on the study that we did, we interviewed operators and we talked to other agencies and studied how other agencies, um, schedule their fees. The first category of fee is for issuing permit, renewal and fleet expansion, which is a flat fee of two thousand dollars. It's annual, it's non-refundable. And the way it is calculated is that is based on the average staff time and staff cost for CDT staff to review the application and for revenue services, clerk's office and finance to process the fee and issue the permit. The second category of fee is per ride fee, which is fifteen cents per ride. It is due to the city in a quarterly basis and it's non-refundable. And this fee set to cover the staff cost to operate, to manage and the program on a daily basis and to enforce it. There are, if the revenue allows, there are other options to use this fee and the revenue through this fee. Um, for example, one of them is actually to create some parking spaces for these devices or develop an online system for ridership monitoring and reporting. The third category of fee, which is one-time fee, it's refundable, is public property repair and maintenance fee, which is five thousand dollars. It is set to cover the cost of any maintenance if city has to do on public right-of-way. Uh, for example, for the situations when the vendor leaves operating in the city, but there are damages to public right-of-way. Uh, we are also recommending to revisit these fees on an annual basis to make sure that these fees are reflecting the actual staff time and spend on the program and, um, change the fees and amend the fees if needed. Next slide, please. And as part of this program, we are including some equity elements into the requirements. There are some of them that are required in our application, proposed application, and some of them are recommended. And the first required item is we are asking our operators to provide alternatives. People don't have bank account or credit card. We are asking our operators to provide services to people who don't have a smartphone. And so it basically gets activated with a regular text. And we are requiring them to provide educational outreach materials in Spanish and English, have accessible services and provide a twenty-four-seven two or three customer service. There are two elements that we are recommending in our application. One of them is discounted pricing plan. Many vendors in many cities, they offer discounted pricing plan. And usually the way it works, it asks if any community member who wants to apply for this if they are already registered to assist it, assisted program, federal or state assisted program. And that's the way to, um, be eligible for this discounted pricing plan for shared micro-mobility. The other category of, um, the other element that we are recommending our operators to include is to create and have a strategy to create jobs locally. For example, giving a rebalancing task to local people. Next slide, please. So here it is, the two questions that you're suggesting for your discussion. Uh, we are, the first question is, should I create a shared micro-mobility program that allows private operators to rent shared micro-mobility devices such as bicycle and electric scooters to the public? And the second question is, is there any other topic that you have experienced with or heard of that we should consider in our ordinance or regulation? Anything about fee, parking regulations, safety requirement for riders or the public, usage of public right-of-way, service to communities of concern areas, any other topic? This ends our presentation. I'm happy to answer any clarifying question that you may have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Manzi and Ms. Orang. Thank you for your presentation. Very well done. Are there any council clarifying questions before I open it up for public comment? Councilmember Ready?
Thank you so much for, uh, staff for this presentation and for this idea. I'm very excited about, uh, micro-mobility. However, I have this recollection, this memory of scooters being deposited in ponds or lakes or the, you know, beaches and or just left haphazardly outside stores. And I'm just wondering if your conversations with other communities has given you the confidence that the vendors are able to control that behavior in some way?
Yes, there are some cities I know like Mountain View tried that. And they are actually requiring all the devices to be back at designated spaces, which I include in Bonoc, I believe it is in a slide five, uh, which we call them Bike Share or Scooter Corales. Um, so people cannot end their trip and it keeps charging their credit card until they are actually parked in these specific locations. And I believe this could be controlled by that geofencing technique. So they'll make, they'll make sure that these devices are at designated areas.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that explanation.
And I I wanted to say I'd been advised that in a study session, we can take all of the public com, excuse me. We can take all of the council member questions and discussion first. And then we can take public comment and that will end the study session. So what I'd like to do is have public comment, excuse me, I keep saying public comment. I mean, council discussion. Let's do our council. Let's do our council discussion, raise all our questions or concerns or anything we'd like to do, and then we'll hear from the public and that will close the study session. So I would like to ask council member ready, since you began, would you like to start, would you like to finish any additional questions or would you like to wait?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I'm very supportive of this, of this proposal and encourage staff to pursue it. I just had that one question that was needed to be clarified, but otherwise I'm very supportive.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hale?
Thank you. This is, this is exciting and I appreciate staff's work on this. It's a topic that came up, gosh, probably two years ago when I was a member of the commute.org board, which I gladly passed on to council member Smith. But at the time, we were grappling with policies for this because most cities on the peninsula did not have a policy and I would trust that most still do not. So I'm going to guess we're leading the way here. My main question is, did we draw from, like, what are the other cities of our size that we drew from, not just that had written a policy and ordinance, but actually had significant, you know, experience or user feedback so that we could, could better inform our decisions?
Yes, we talked a lot with other cities, not only peninsula, but even Sacramento, Long Beach, to learn from their, their experience. One of the topics that we learned from other agencies and we included that in our regulation is parking requirement. And when we proposed the details, you can see there's a long list of places that are not allowed to park. So that was one thing. And just the fact that they are requiring operators to, for example, require riders to park on a specific locations. The other topics that we learned from some peninsula cities, including San Mateo, is requiring operators to communicate with the city if they have any plan in changing their business plan. There has been some cases, there are operators, for example, they had bike share fleets in some cities and they took them and collected them overnight without letting the city staff know. But for us, this is a requirement, so we can communicate that with the public. I can say, the other topics, the data sharing, which I learned from other cities, that there should be very specific, in a specific format, unless it's very useless. And then just the fact that giving the flexibility, one thing we are recommending is to actually give authority to the city manager to adopt the regulation and to city director to make changes to the regulation if needed. And that's what we learned from other cities. For now, we are proposing a maximum and minimum fleet size, but it really, what we learned from other cities is really depends on when they start operating and how many operators we actually have. So we wanted to keep that minimum and maximum flexible and actually give authority to the city director to say, we are capped on five operators, for example.
Thank you. That's helpful clarification of that question. Just a couple more questions. You know, one echoes a question from council member G at an earlier topic, but how are we going to think about program metrics and success?
The ridership?
Purely in terms of ridership, okay. And, and, and I think one issue that isn't addressed here, and I know it's out of scope for this specific topic, is safety. How will we educate members of the public who use these about appropriate use? And, you know, I think another, I would throw out there, another measurement would be safety, not just ridership, but you know, ideally that there's no incidents. I do think it is important, you know, PCE, Peninsula Clean Energy, we also worked on an e-bikes program that was related to, for lower income residents, because there is this really big issue with transit of the last mile. Just getting to the train to use it, if you don't live right near the train, how do you do that so that you can use that transportation and solutions? There's bicycles, but not everyone feels comfortable riding a bicycle. There's e-bikes which help get you that extra boost, but that are rather expensive. And then there are these micro mobility solutions which can be much more affordable. So I think it is a good part of the mix on transportation and helping people get that last mile. I just want to make sure that there, we do everything we can around safety. I do think it is important to get ahead of this by putting the program and the metrics in place and then hopefully we can do more education as we get interest from these programs. Malahat, do you have a sense, you know, if we were to move forward with this, are there already providers that are interested in operating in Redwood City or is this more theoretic? Okay, so there are.
Yes, we had, we have two interested operators that reached out to us, one of them two times. And we had a few startups that reached out to us, wanted to test their system, very high tech in Redwood City. I don't know the status of the startups, but I have talked to those potential vendors recently, just interviewing them, get some input from them, yes.
Great. And even, you know, before, earlier in the pandemic, I had my sister and many friends would use e-bike, or I'm sorry, electric scooters to get to Caltrain. So I know they are a popular option. I'm glad we're coming up with a solution proactively and I really appreciate the work on this to get us a good program. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Council member Smith?
Sorry about the lighting situation right now, but I will, I will try to give my comments despite the situation with the light. But I just want to say, first of all, I love it when folks from the transportation department come and speak to us because it is a topic that is critically important, but something that sometimes we don't get as much visibility into. So just want to say, it's so great to have you, Ms. Orang, and of course, Ms. Manzi with us today to talk about this really interesting innovative program. But I just want to echo a few of the comments of my colleagues. Super exciting. I really think mobility is such an equalizer in terms of that last mile transit, as Vice Mayor Hale mentioned. I particularly think that it could be impactful to folks in my district. You know, I do live about 0.3 miles away from the train station and we are a community that suffers from that last mile situation. So it, you know, it takes about, I would say 15 to 20 minutes to get from where I live over to the train, to the Redwood City Caltrain station. And so this is going to make it even easier, which brings me to the question that I have for city staff, which is about you, in the city staff report discussed methods or policies to be able to ensure, I'm forgetting the exact term that you used, but it was basically adequate, adequate distribution of the devices within the city limits, right? So, and I guess what I mean by that is that you're, it seemed like what the staff report was suggesting is that you would be able to have and control the amount of electric scooters that were in one area of the city versus another. So they wouldn't all end up, let's say downtown, that you could control, you know, where they are, you know, they could be a good concentration of these electric scooters in my district, possibly La Sex district. I'm just curious, how do you go about enforcing that? Like, what are the mechanisms that you're thinking about just in making sure that we don't have like significant amounts of device clustering in one area of the city?
One thing we are requiring from our future permitted operators is to do rebalancing. That's the phrase we are using. That means that we redistribute the devices. What we are requiring is to do that once daily and in high used areas, do it twice daily, for example, in the middle of the day and at the end of, I don't know, six, seven in the afternoon. So it is a requirement in the permit to do that rebalancing. And in one photo, there is an image of a truck that has all bicycles. I think it's on a slide six, but for scooters, it's even easier. People just can, there are some people, they actually make my outfit and they use their own van to move things around, especially if they hire local people, it is very easier to rebalance the devices throughout the city.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest with you, that was like the particular aspect of the policy that I was interested in. And I'm really excited about the fact that we're empowering our city staff leadership to be able to look critically and agilely around issues of that sort. Because I, I do truly think that, you know, in order to make this a value added service for our community, that issues like rebalancing are the critical aspects. So just want to encourage you all to kind of be thinking about that on an ongoing basis. Of course, this is a study session, but I'm hoping that we're going to move forward to passing some kind of acceptance policy around this. And that for me is something that I want us to see, I want to see us reviewing on an ongoing basis because I really think that that is where the impact happens, you know, for communities that don't have ready, ready access to variable track path, transportation, including cars, you know, this micro mobility option is very, very promising. So I just want to thank you for bringing this to us. It's exciting stuff and I look forward to hearing more. Thanks.
Thank you, council member Smith. Council member Espinoza Garnica?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I agree with the statements made by my colleagues previously, especially council member Smith's about the way it's distributed in our neighborhoods. Yeah, I'm just happy to see that we have different modes of transportation that are cleaner and accessible to all. And I think it'd be great because I think you're able to explore more of the city, get around, be on the street, you know, all that does play a part, you know, small but mighty, you know, on the environmental aspect. And hopefully people can, you know, visit more parts of the city when they're around. So I'm excited about this one.
Thank you. Council member Giri?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, when, I remember when we got the shared bike mobility transportation in our city and we were very excited, but it was in such a developmental stage that it was difficult to, to really make good use of it. So I'm excited that we have now lots of other options and lots of other ways of monitoring and balancing and really the outcomes of what we're going to do. So I look forward to this. I think it's a great opportunity for folks that want to have a diverse way of moving around. The last mile is important, but also a fun mile. You know, you see folks that are younger that are on these, some of this different mobility modes that are really having fun, as was mentioned, just to, not only to get them to where they need to be, but also to be part of, being part of our city without having to have a car. So this is exciting. I'm glad we're, we're bringing it back and now with a lot more information, a lot more data, a lot more cities that have, you know, done it and, and lessons learned. So it's exciting to see this happening as a new opportunity for mobility in our city.
Thank you. Council member G?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. And thank you, Jessica Malahat, for bringing this forward and all the hard work as council member Giri shared. I think when we started this several years ago, I think we were too far ahead in the industry as kind of matured and evolved and kind of grown up a little bit. So this is exciting. As Vice Mayor Hale said, you know, at commute.org, my question always has been, shouldn't somebody bigger than each city in the county do it on their own? And nobody could answer, well, who would that be? So I guess we do have to start one city at a time, which is a good thing and a challenge, but it's, you know, we can start a lot faster than waiting for a county wide agency. A couple of things to think about. One is on the slide with the fees. I want to make sure that the fees that we are charging are going to be enough to cover staff time. And my, one of my concerns is the enforcement. I think it was 15 cents a ride. I'm not sure that is going to be enough to deal with complaints, blocking sidewalks, scooter, you know, whatever in the wrong places. So I would ask staff really take a hard look at, at what that looks like in terms of staff time, but the anticipated revenue might be to make sure that we cover our costs. And then we're not subsidizing the program. The second thing is, and Jessica, I think you were here for the bike share program. I'd be interested, when this comes back, if we are able to, to cities that want to scale, particularly our neighboring cities, would be interested in scaling or have that option down the street, down the road, once they see how our program works. I think you were here when we had the bike share programs and the blue bikes were on the wrong side of the city limit and the green bikes were in the wrong place or the yellow bikes were in the wrong place. I think through this program, we can control that. But for example, if San Carlos wanted to be a participant, could we scale this so that they could participate and they could contract with us to administer their program or Belmont or another city? Because I think this does give great opportunity for the last mile, just not for our residents in Redwood City, but throughout the county, or at least the South County. And I'd be interested in seeing if we can scale that for cities that would like to participate, particularly when we're successful. But with that, great work, looking forward to it, support it. And what has to go with it is an education program to make sure everybody sees scooters are coming or bike share, whatever, and that we all can operate safely together in Redwood City. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you. Ms. Orang, you have your hand raised. Would you like to comment?
Yes, so in terms of you asked about if any other VR agency can work on this, Caltrain did a study because they have some trains that are the, the bike trains and their bike trains are over capacity. They did a study to address that issue and they looked at if they can have some sort of shared macro mobility just to serve their, the transit riders. And they did this study and they came up with three scenarios, but that one was, is more focused on train, train stations, not serving the city, the whole city. They did this study for the entire peninsula, which is available and we can share it with you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Well, I was going to, I agree with my colleagues with, of all the comments and also the questions that were asked. I was going to say, I was going to ask, how aggressive will we need to be in informing the public not only that this product is available for them, but also safety? How to ride, where to ride, where to drop off, things like that. And I was wondering if we had factored that into the cost. I agree with council member G. Sometimes we're a little bit too, I don't know, we, we sometimes forget that there are unintended costs that become, come to us and we're not accounting for that. And a good example would be complaints that come in and you have to send someone out to address the complaint. Maybe something's been left or someone's complaining about the way someone's riding and you have to actually send out a public safety officer for that reason. I mean, these are costs that have to be considered. And I just wanted to know if we could give a little bit more thought into ensuring that this isn't going to become a drain for us to enforce the program. And I'm wondering if Peninsula Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance might be interested in helping us as a pilot do education for the people in our community, educate the operators as to safety that they can teach to people through messaging that they give out and also messaging that we can do, but maybe they can also help through their channels. So I just wondered if maybe we could check in with Peninsula Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance, because I think product safety, how it's used on our streets is going to be, I hope people want to use these. I really do. I really would like to see that. However, my concern is that you have a problem and that people don't know how to use them properly. I've seen it, witnessed it in San Diego. People nearly ran people over with their scooters on sidewalks and pedestrians were flying left and right to get out of the way. I, I don't want to see that happen in Redwood City. I'd like to be a little more proactive about this and get out in front of it with education as best we can. Ms. Manzi, did you want to say anything? You popped up there and I didn't know if you wanted to add something to what I just said.
I could just chime in that, yes, I think commute.org could be a great opportunity. And then also, C-CAG staff has been starting work on developing some policies similar to what we're developing that could be used as templates for other communities throughout the county. And so that's, I think, another opportunity for leveraging work that's being done by others and that could benefit everybody in the county. So I think there are definitely a lot of opportunities in that regard.
So then I, I said, when, I guess it'll be the future. When will we address electric bikes and scooters and something, and, and these devices being used on sidewalks? I, I'm anticipating this will become a problem. I'm wondering if we have a plan in place to address it in the future on enforcement?
Yes, so at this point, we haven't made modifications to how sort of the general public is operating, you know, currently it's, it's not legal to ride your bike on the sidewalk and that those same rules would end up applying to micro mobility devices. But there are modifications that we've been looking at to change in the code. We haven't scheduled that necessarily, but it's, it is definitely in our work plan and something that we've been talking with the city attorney's office about, you know, a number of just sort of cleanup items to ensure that our codes meet our current needs. So it's, it's on the radar, but without a specific schedule yet.
Well, I know enforcement can be costly and sometimes things are overlooked, like riding on a sidewalk because there just aren't enough officers to go around. This may be an ideal opportunity for civilian involvement in some fashion. There may be something that we think about for the future. And lastly, I'm, thank you to both you, Ms. Manzi and Ms. Orong, there she is, Orong, in that your local job creation strategy, that's brilliant. I mean, why not? I think that's wonderful. Let's open these opportunities and encourage them to do job creation for people who live in Redwood City. I think it's a great idea. Ms. Orong, did you have a final comment?
Yes, to answer some of your questions, adding to Jessica's point, one thing we are requiring our operators to have is to have a local staff available to address those issues. For example, if something is parked in an inappropriate place, so there are local staff that they can immediately address these issues when we call them. Hopefully that lowers the amount of time we need for enforcement and using the city staff time. The other thing in terms of safety, a few council members mentioned that one thing, again, we are proposing in our regulation is to actually have speed limits for the electric devices, for the shared electric devices. And I did consult with RPD and they suggested me to use whatever is in California vehicle code. So hopefully that can help with some speeding problem and unsafe behavior.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the extra information and I think this has been a really healthy discussion and my thanks again to staff for bringing this forward. I know what the council will not be making a decision on this tonight, but I think you can see from our comments that we're in a favorable place regarding this particular topic. So thank you very much. Now I'd like to turn it over to the city clerk to facilitate public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. If there are any members of the public who would like to speak on this topic, the shared micro mobility services in Redwood City, please raise your hand now and keep your hand raised so that we can see how many speakers we have for this topic. Give it a few more seconds. If you're calling in, please press star nine if you would like to raise your hand. Okay, we do have one speaker, Mr. Brandt. You will have two minutes and the timer will begin once you start speaking.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I know on the earlier bike trial that a number of council members alluded to, there was, there was too much friction. There were too few, you know, the network, that there weren't, there were too few stations and too few bikes and they weren't in the right places. So, you know, there has to be a critical mass. And so I, I'm hopeful that the new operators, you know, having learned from all the history of failed, failed and successful trials elsewhere, will, will obviously take that into account. They have skin in the game. I completely agree that they should be asked to do as much enforcement and cleanup as possible. I also suggest that as, as Malahad O'Ring said, if they have GPS capabilities, they need to track where these vehicles are and get on top of vehicles that move without being rented. I know in a lot of communities around the world, you know, it tends to be maybe unhoused people or, or younger people, you know, find it funny to either abuse or do pranks or whatever. That sort of thing needs to be tracked carefully. I also, in the same spirit, would urge that, you know, anonymous rentals not be permitted. If everyone is registered, a registered user, then, you know, there's some accountability as to, you know, who has what scooter and what happens to it during the time that they are responsible for it. And for the unbanked, I want to suggest the Clipper Card system is already, already supports that and that's used for transit around the Bay Area. The Bike Link, hourly bike rental blockers use this system too. And if people register, they can add money to their bike, their Clipper Card and would be able to, as an unbanked person, while also being registered. So we have some accountability, we'd, we'd be able to use the system. So I suggest exploring that as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brandt. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you so much, everyone. Okay, now moving on to item number nine, matters of council interest. Nine A, does any city council member have a report of a conference that they have attended? Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I recently, I recently attended on, maybe two weeks ago on Monday, a conference, an LGBTQ leadership conference in, I mean, hosted by Equality California. So that was really interesting. There were several panels throughout the day. It was about redistricting, policies and housing. We've had, we had senators and assembly members and other elected and appointed officials there and on the, on the panels to discuss all this stuff. So it was really, it was a really exciting time to meet folks as well, to meet other, to be in community, honestly, with other LGBTQ members and leadership and meeting of all ages. And seeing how many people actually were elected during a, a new district, new districts, you know, I saw there was, I think, kind of a diverse crowd and a lot of folks mentioned how they were elected because of the district, because they went into district elections. So I think it's, it's really working here. So it was really exciting to just talk about policy with folks and be in touch with people from around the, around California. And yeah, I just was inspired by a lot of the work that they were doing and all the things that they had to face. There's a lot of hardships for folks in the LGBTQ community, even as leaders and people who are elected by the public. And I was, I appreciated their honesty and the candidness that everyone had from the folks hosting the events, those on panels and, and all the, all the rest of the folks. So it was really pleasant. I really enjoyed it. It was a pleasure and a privilege. So that's all.
Thank you for reporting out, Councilmember. Nine B, I think you're up again. Transportation Mobility Subcommittee with Councilmembers Aguirre, Espinoza Garnica and G. And I believe that Councilmember Espinoza Garnica will give the update.
Oh, yes. Let me pull up my notes. I almost forgot about that one. Sorry, just a moment.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, can you hear me? I think what we'll do is move on to the next committee. I have a feeling she'll need to reboot and come up again. Why don't we move on to the Utilities Subcommittee? That's myself, Councilmember Espinoza Garnica and Councilmember Ready, and I will give the update. An overview of the city's solid waste services and options for rates were provided during the meeting. Committee members requested another meeting to be scheduled in October or November in order to more thoroughly consider additional options for rates and related programs benefiting the community. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, are you there?
I'm here. Sorry about that, folks.
No, that's okay. So why don't you give us an update on Transportation Mobility Subcommittee?
Yes, so we do have to negotiate with a consulting firm to develop a funding strategy for this project. We expect implementation to take two years and key components are prioritizing and pursuing grants and developing a constituents, a constituency, sorry, for the project among policymakers at all levels, from the city and county to the state and federal government. And there are a variety of upcoming funding opportunities that staff will be pursuing, including the San Mateo County Measure A slash W Highway Program this month and state funding programs next year. At the same time, Subcommittee members will be advocating for the project with other elected officials. And that is all.
Thank you. Next, we move on to the City-Owned Property Ad Hoc Committee, which is myself, Vice Mayor Hale and Councilmember Ready. I'll give the update. The City-Owned Property Committee met on August 25th to discuss the city's potential property exchange initiative with the County of San Mateo. The item is currently scheduled to come before the city council at the October 11th city council meeting. Item D, Harborview Ad Hoc Committee, that's myself, Vice Mayor Hale and Councilmember Smith, I'll give that update. The Harborview Ad Hoc Committee, composed of Vice Mayor Hale, Councilmember Smith and myself, met on Wednesday, September 1st to receive information from city staff on the project's proposed community benefits. The development proposal is available on the city's website. The committee's role is to provide input to staff as staff negotiates a potential development agreement documenting community benefits and vesting rights for ultimate city council consideration, which I believe will be in early 2022. Now moving on to the last item, City Manager Update. Ms. Diaz, would you like to give us an update?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. So three quick items for this evening. First, I wanted to share that we welcome 10 lateral firefighters who began work last week. And I really want to thank the fire department and our human resources staff who've been working together fiercely to be able to fill current vacancies in the department. And we also expect to welcome a new fire prevention officer later this month. Second, we've all been hearing a lot about the possibility of a booster being required for our COVID-19 vaccines. And I wanted to share that the county health department is recommending that residents who may be immunocompromised consult with their own health provider about additional doses of the COVID-19 vaccine. At this time, boosters are not being administered at community-based clinics, but the county is working to be ready to remobilize the mass vaccination capacity once they receive the federal and state approval and guidance that's needed to do that. And then this weekend, I kicked off Welcoming Week, a time when we celebrate and appreciate the participation of immigrants in our community. And I wanted to show there's still several events coming up this week, including a welcoming storytime in the park tomorrow at 10:00 AM in Marlin Park. There's also Welcoming Week for Families event this Saturday from 11:00 to noon at the downtown library and from 2:00 to 3:00 PM at the Redwood Chores Branch Library. So there'll be many activities, books and, and activities to share. And that's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Now I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of a deeply admired leader, businessman and philanthropist in our community, Mr. Mervin Morris. He's a longtime Atherton resident, Mervin Morris, Mervin G. Morris, founder of Mervin's Stores and philanthropist, and he passed away on August 24th, 2021, at the age of 101. Merv lived the quintessential American dream. He was born in San Francisco on July 4th, 1920, was a third-generation Californian. He enlisted in the military during World War II. After the war, he returned home and rejoined his parents in the family business, a retail, retail store called Morris's. He eventually decided he needed to strike out on his own and opened the first Mervins in San Lorenzo, California. In the early years of building his business, Merv met his wife Rosalyn on a blind date. After marrying in 1950, they welcomed four children, Diane, Jeff and twins, John and Jim. During his 30-year tenure as founder and CEO of Mervins, Merv built a reputation of having both a keen business mind and a deep sense of loyalty. His employees and customers loved Mervins in Redwood City and Merv returned the feelings in spades. He was respected and beloved. He was an innovative leader, smartly choosing his store sites and understanding the consumers of the post-war boom years. In recognition of his achievements, 1977, Merv was elected chairman of the Board of Directors of the National Retail Merchants Association, an organization comprised of approximately 3,500 retail stores worldwide. At the time, Merv was the first West Coast retailer to head the organization in more than 60 years. Merv also became a committed philanthropist and served as a trustee on numerous nonprofit boards, including the Boys and Girls Clubs of America. He provided the funding to build the Mervin G. Morris Clubhouse in Redwood City. He and his wife Roz were frequent visitors and cared deeply about the youth, especially those in the neighborhood around the clubhouse. He took time to meet with students, even funded four years of college for one of them. He led fundraising campaigns, bringing countless major donors, excuse me, onto the team. He laid the groundwork for the solid foundation for the Boys and Girls Club that is, is built today. Merv and Roz built an admirable philanthropic legacy during their nearly 66 years of marriage. They were also committed supporters of the Peninsula Volunteers in Menlo Park, providing critical funds to build the Rosalyn G. Morris Activity Center. Their philanthropic interests further included the San Francisco Symphony, the San Francisco Opera and the United States Holocaust Memorial Museum. Merv was preceded by his loving wife Roz, by his parents and by his sister Bertil. He is survived by his four children and their spouses, Diane, Jeff, Missy, John, Jim and Susan, and by his sister Jacqueline. He is also survived by his 14 grandchildren and 10 great-grandchildren. Their family has graciously directed gifts in his honor towards the Boys and Girls Club of the Peninsula, Peninsula Volunteers, or a charity of one's choosing, and they encourage each and every one of us to do so also. Mervin Morris will be deeply missed, but his astounding legacy will live on for his family and for the broader community for many years to come. Our next city council meeting is scheduled for September 27th, 2021. I wanted to mention this Saturday, our flag was at half-mast in honor of those who perished on 9/11. I wanted everyone to please remember that life is so precious. I encourage all of you to please stay healthy and I encourage all of you to please stay healthy and safe and have a good week. Good night.